And you're all set.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen March 15th, 2022 meeting, virtual meeting. All selectmen are in attendance. Call the meeting to order at 6:31. First item up is public comment. If anyone in the attendees would like to speak, I see Mr. Robbins has his hand raised. Let's bring him over. We'll start with him and then we'll go to Ms. McKee after that. And Mr. Maria, so if we could bring Mr. Robbins over first, did we lose him?
His hand is no longer raised.
Okay, maybe that was a mistake. Chris, if you want to speak, just please raise your hand.
And he just.
Okay, I saw him first, so let's bring him over first. Thank you.
Ah, there he is.
Good evening, Chris. How are you? Welcome. You are muted. If you'd like to unmute, we would love to hear from you.
Unmute?
There you are. We can hear you now. Welcome, Chris.
Okay, I'm trying to see if you can see my photo.
There we go. You're there. Nice to see you. You're ready.
Hollywood is waiting. Hey, I've not done this before, but before I start my chat on the time allotted, I wanted to first say that I want to thank you. This whole town thanks you all how you led us through this COVID mess, this pandemic, in an unprecedented way. Back in the early 1900s, we dealt with the Spanish flu, but this was unlike anything. And I think all of you, including Mark, your whole team, got us through this mess, and I think we're all on the other side. The stress at your homes, with your families, all of us, we, we got through it and we got through it because of the leadership and how you led this community. So we, I can't thank you enough, so I just wanted to get that off. So here's my topic. I'm talking about the website mysouthrow.com, that Beth Mello does such a wonderful job keeping this family informed about all the good news. But there's a dimension of the blog that I want to address. And so I'm making a request, and I'm going to present the case very briefly, that we, that we ask her to eliminate the anonymous comments and the defamatory remarks. So here, this is what I'm, I'm going to read you, and it just takes a few minutes. "Over the last few years and recently, I have read messages on the website mysouthrow.com where individuals comment anonymously. At times, these comments are inaccurate, misleading, and create confusion about problems that are important for our community to resolve. One writer accused a committee of being scofflaws, criminals colluding with developers and lining their own pockets. This type of defamatory remark and others like it is harmful to people's careers, discourages residents from volunteering, and causes members to resign from committees and leadership roles. As a result, the town loses an invaluable asset, a wealth of volunteer expertise to address important Southborough issues. I know of no other organization dependent on volunteers where this kind of harmful vitriol occurs. Certain negative and anonymous content is gradually destroying our town's heritage, our culture, our values, and our trust for one another. These pervasive comments diminish how we are perceived as a community by our residents, some of our residents, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and throughout the Metro West. Regretfully, our children may observe and at times learn to mimic this kind of negative behavior. So when critical issues arise, we need to collaborate as a, as a team on an equal playing field to ensure the well-being of our community. We welcome civil discourse and disagreement. However, it should be done with mutual respect for our fellow residents. We need to talk with each other and not at each other. Let us be mindful that volunteerism is the cornerstone of how our community functions. It is important we remember to respect, to encourage, to nurture, and to honor those who serve as volunteers or as town employees. We have a great deal to be grateful for. Let's continue the momentum of our accomplishments and celebrate as a community of one. Now, to sustain our progress, I propose the Select Board and concerned citizens take three action steps. First, request Beth Mello, who I think in many regards, we all think the world of, owner of mysouthrow.com, exclude from her website anonymous remarks, defamatory comments, and require writer's name. Two, form an education and training committee that will optimize a committee's ability to lead and interact collaboratively to achieve the goals of a master plan. Possible training could include subjects like leadership, teamwork, civility, budgeting, collaboration, or specific committees such as economic development or planning. And three, finally, it's so important to honor and recognize volunteers and our town employees regularly for outstanding service to our community. Let's start immediately and send those thank you cards, place phone calls, and extend your hand in appreciation. A thank you will improve the morale and performance, enabling us to continue being the very best. And that's it.
Great, Chris. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I would just say that, you know, Beth does a great job of educating the residents of Southborough on what's going on in town, on the issues. But that's a private blog. I don't see this board taking a position, Chris, but certainly people are welcome to reach out to Beth on their own as a citizen, you know, and express any concerns or anything they may feel. But thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. We always appreciate it.
Well, thank you for giving me the time, and I know with all the due diligence that you perform your role in, we'll, we'll get through this and get on the other side, and thank you so much.
Awesome, Chris. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, Vanessa, can we bring over Ms. McKee? Good evening, Catherine. You are muted. Welcome. There you are.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a quick comment on, well, thank you, Chris, for your comments. Those, it was a wonderful capturing the importance of our volunteers in town and, and how important it is to covet them. And I couldn't have asked for a better intro into what I'm about to comment on, which is, I'd like to attend the meeting tonight, but I do have a conflict that will take me away for about 15 minutes, so in case the topic is brought up. By the way, my name is Catherine McKee. I am the Trails Committee Chair, but I am talking on behalf of a resident of Southborough. And so I'm speaking to the article number, I think, 27, the Town Code Regulation Proposed Article, and just wanted to let the board know that if that article is passed as written, two active volunteers will be terminated from the Trails Committee. So I did want to bring that to your attention, and I do hope to be able to have a conversation or just to listen in later about the discussion that you'll be having with Mr. Hagerty, who sponsors the article. And that's really.
Catherine, just so you know, Mr. Hagerty has requested that it not be on the agenda tonight. I think he's making some possible changes, so it wasn't ready for tonight. So just so you don't hang around when you don't have to, it is not on the agenda when we get to that.
I might be back anyway.
You are certainly welcome to do that, as always. But yeah, just so you know that it is not, we're gonna move that to another meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you, and thank you for speaking out. Appreciate it. Have a great night. Thanks. You too. Can we bring over Ms. Maria, please? Good evening, Debbie. Welcome. You are muted.
Hi there. It's Debbie Di Maria, 58, Flag Road. I just wanted to bring to your attention a letter that I wrote about the Public Works Planning Board. I did quite a lot of research to try to understand the role of the Public Works Planning Board. And I wanted to just briefly inform you what I found that, and Mr. Stivers knows this, because I know that he's a member of the Public Works Planning Board, but, and I'll tell you why I, I'm interested to inform you. So unlike other maybe committees and boards in town that are appointed by the selectmen, the Public Works Planning Board came about in 1991 when several town departments dissolved, and they formed into the DPW. So that was the Highway Department, the Cemetery Department, and the Tree Department. And when they dissolved in 1991, it wasn't done at a vote at annual town meeting. It was done at, at the ballot. So it was the 1991 election. And at the same time that those Highway Cemetery and Tree Departments dissolved, was the formation of the Public Works Planning Board, and it had a very specific charge, and it was to be the Oversight Committee for the DPW. And the group at the time identified what their priorities were. They were solid waste, water, cemetery, trees, equipment, and support. And those are the same items that the DPW covers. So later in 1991, the last week of December, at the 1991 Mass Legislature, those, this initiative was passed, and so this is now passed into law. And so the reason I wanted to write to you is because I know that the Public Works Planning Board hasn't met, and this is causing, I think, a lot of stress in certain areas that, you know, where this board was really supposed to serve as an advisory board to the selectmen, and it's just simply not functioning. So, you know, I've given some recommendations, but a couple of things I wanted to point out is, one of their functions, and I think it's right in the, right on the website, it says that the Public Works Planning Board will provide planning, managing, and financing of said town. And so this is really the board that should be the advisory body to the selectmen for the DPW. And so I know that tonight you're going to be talking about capital planning and maybe some other boards that might be involved in looking specifically at the DPW budget. And I just want to say, I think that's all very good. But officially and legally, the body that informs the Select Board is the Public Works Planning Board. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, I have found some other examples of towns that have enacted legislation on public work planning boards. One of them was Lee, Massachusetts, and there's a couple others, but Wayland, Massachusetts as well. So Wayland's a little bit closer. Wayland takes a very interesting approach, which I would like to present to you in terms of dealing with the tree warden and consolidated tree hearings. In the packet that I sent you, essentially, I've given you a copy of my typical agenda for their meetings, and also they do hold consolidated tree hearings. I wanted to remember, remind you that in 2016, Chairman Brian Shea and others on the Select Board, Board of Selectmen at the time, dissolved the Recycling and Green Technology Committee. I was on that committee from 2005 to 2010. But in 2016, that committee was dissolved, and it was rolled into the Public Works Planning Board. And the reason given was that they thought that they could handle, you know, the types of recycling, sustainable topics that were being covered by, by that group. So by the Public Works Planning Board not meeting, we essentially have a very big deficit. And not to mention, it was expanded in 2016, not legally, but by the Board of Selectmen at that vote, August 2016. It was expanded to take care of some other matters before the town, having to do with the recycling center, the transfer station, and municipal items having to do with sustainability and a lot of the different actions that were being taken by that committee. So again, there's.
Can I just jump in? Sorry, can I just jump in quick? So this is actually a larger discussion, I think, than, than just a public comment, and I don't want to be rude or cut you off, but if you could kind of just, again, wrap it up. We did get the letter. I'll be honest, I haven't had the opportunity to go through it. I look forward to doing that. But again, I think it's a bigger discussion than getting into tonight.
Okay, I appreciate that. If I can just kind of tie it to what you're discussing tonight, I did see the letter from Jason Malinowski about capital planning. I think it's fantastic what he wants to do, but I believe the correct board to advise the Select Board on matters relating to the budget at the DPW is the Public Works Planning Board. That's not to say others can't take a look at it. I just wanted to be honest about that. But I don't believe that's the, you know, final say. And the other is I wanted to tie it into the letter from Ms. Galligan, having to do with two things. She, one, wants a waiver about a bunch of trees, which I don't believe that the Select Board can do. I believe that that has to have a consolidated tree hearing. And the second, in her letter, she talks about requesting a consolidated tree hearing, but not for the trees that she's showing, just for the triangle at Flag Deerfoot Intersection. And I just want to remind you that that intersection is being widened because of the truck traffic on Flag Road. And I would ask the board for the results of the truck traffic study. Remember, there were people who were asking for truck study on Flag, but it was open to look at the town as a global truck study. So we don't need that triangle widened until we have the results of the truck, global truck study.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Litt, we could bring him over. Good evening, Mr. Litt. You are muted. There you are. We can see you too.
I don't want to drag out public comment.
Welcome.
Good evening. Now you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Good. So I don't want to drag out your, your public comment period. But I did want to speak a minute about what Mr. Robbins said. I agree with, with Ms. Brascio that it's not the place of the Board of Selectmen to talk about, to, to direct, you know, how a private blog operates. But aside from that, I fully support what Mr. Robbins had to say about the impact that it has been having on the town. As many of you know, I pay attention to a lot of the boards and committees that try and operate in this town. I think, you know, the volunteers are underappreciated. And I think that the treatment that they get on that blog is unconscionable. I mean, I have, I stopped reading it some time ago. I believe I posted to it once on this subject indicating that, you know, anonymous people who say things that are just outlandish ought to be moderated. I wish they'd stand up behind their words. But I just couldn't let the opportunity go by without indicating that there's more than one person in this town who appreciates the volunteers and does not appreciate what the blog has been doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Litt. As always, it's a pleasure to see you. All right, any other public comments? Mr. Semino? Good evening, Mr. Semino. You are muted. Welcome.
I won't even turn my camera on because I will be less than 30 seconds. I disagree, and I think it's overthinking it to say that is not in the purview of this board to make a request, not a direction, but a request of Beth Mello to modify her standards on her blog. You could certainly make that request, and she's certainly free to ignore it. But to suggest that it's not in your purview, I think, is perhaps thinking it a little too far. So it's a rhetorical point. Don't have to address it or respond to it, but I did want to make it. And maybe some of the others on your board might have that same view. Anyway, carry on and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Seeing as I thought I addressed it, if there's anyone that would like to quickly offer another opinion, you're, you're certainly welcome to at this time. Okay, I see none. So again, we'll move on then. Next, under Scheduled Appointments, Nary Building Committee Interviews, Ms. Kemper. If we could bring her over. Good evening, Ms. Kemper. You are muted. I don't know if you plan on sharing your screen. Oh, there you are. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to have you here.
Same here.
First, I'll thank you for stepping forward. It's always great to have people that step forward for our boards and committees. Typically, we start out, if you'd like to just take a minute or two and just kind of introduce yourself to the board, we'll have a quick round of questions if the board has any. And again, thank you for stepping forward.
Sounds good. Hi, everyone. I'm Anuradha Kemper. I have been living in Southborough for about one year now. Before that, I was in Natick. We are a family of four. It's me, my husband, and my two kids. My kids are seven and four. And I work as a software engineering manager at a company called CarGurus in Cambridge. I'm wondering like what, or what kind of details would you guys want to know about me, like something about my profession, something about my personal life, like personal life?
Well, I'll tell you what, we'll open it up to the board. We'll start with Ms. Malinowski.
Okay, thank you. And welcome, Anuradha. We had the pleasure of speaking a few times about this committee. So I, I guess one of my questions would be, what are you most excited about, and what kind of attracted you to apply for this?
Sure, thanks. So I have a vested interest in this project because I have a four-year-old daughter, and I could see her benefiting from this project, like getting an upgraded school would be great for the kids. And also, I would, if there is a change, and if I could be a part of it, I would definitely want to contribute. Also, I'm not sure what kind of roles and responsibilities this project would entail, but I was envisioning, like, it would require like some kind of research, like, which I kind of do as part of my job, like, I interact with different customers to figure out what their requirements are, like, do analysis of their, like, literatures of different companies on what products they have and how my company could integrate their products into our processes, collaborating with different teams to get projects out in my company is one of the skills that I envision I could use in this. So those are my reasons. I thought like, I could like help the committee out and also be part of a system which would enable a new school for the town.
Great. Thank you. No other questions for me, please.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Healy.
Hi, Ms. Kemper. How are you?
Hi, I'm good. Thank you.
You know, when I, when I became a member of this board, I thought maybe it'd be a couple of hours a week. And I, I noticed in your, in your narrative that you said two hours a week. I can almost guarantee you that if you get involved, that, that you're going to want to put in more than a couple of hours a week. And I just want to make sure that isn't an absolute cap. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a hope that it's two hours a week, but not a cap on the amount of time you'd have available?
Yes, like I would be willing to like put in more hours. I was like, that was one of my questions, like, that I had noted down, like, I was looking for some details into like, what kind of effort it would require from my end. I'm happy to put in more time, like, I, I would love to work with more people, like, one of my goals through this project is also because I'm new to this area to get to know more people. So I think if I work with more people, I could make new connections. So I would be happy to do that as well.
I had a feeling that was going to be, that was the, that was going to be your, your reaction to, to the, to the, to the two hours you had stated. And I think that's the right one. I, in terms of how much time it will be, you know, with, with 30-some years of, of watching discussion and debate about schools in Southborough, it will be a time-consuming process. I guarantee that. But one that is particularly parents of, of young children, I think, are very important participants. So I, I join Chelsea and Lisa in thanking you for stepping forward. Take care.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you, and thanks, Ms. Kemper, for volunteering. It is an interesting project, and I guess I do think it's very important to have representation from a parent of, of children going through the system. I think that's an important perspective. Beyond that, I'm curious, do you have a background in financial analysis or architecture or building projects and that kind of stuff at this point, or mainly basically software development background?
Um, yeah, that is kind of correct. Like, I don't have a professional development, professional experience in those areas. It's mostly in software.
And I think we will have that expertise on the committee from other participants, certainly, but I would second Mr. Healy's comment that as you get into this, I think the timing is likely to be variable. There will be some periods where there's not, not a whole lot of effort. But in fact, at various points along the way, when you're working toward a presentation to us or to the school committees or to town meeting, it can be very intensive. We have committees that meet, you know, weekly to get those kind of things ready. So just so your expectations are set properly. But on the other side, I think it can be a very exciting opportunity. This is a huge project for the town. And, and being in the middle of that, I think, at least I would find very, very exciting process and valuable one. So again, I welcome your, your volunteering here, and that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dennington.
Hi, hi, Ms. Kemper. Most of the questions that I had have already been asked. I would, I would again echo what Marty and Sam said. In addition to the time in meeting, there's almost, there's an equal or greater amount of time preparing for meetings. And that part you can kind of squeeze into your schedule where you can find, and then the meetings are usually in, in the evening at, at set times. Sounds like you can find a way to, to make it work. I think the thing which brings you in is that the work's very interesting. So once you get into it, I think you'll find it rewarding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
One question if I could ask was like, with respect to meetings and like the work entail, like, how much would it be between like the 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM window?
For, for meetings?
For, yeah, meetings or like for other research or any work that we have to do, like.
So typically, meetings start times range anywhere from 6:30 to 7:30. I think it depends on the committee. As far as, usually you know well in advance of, you know, any homework that may be required or, you know, anything that the committee would, you know, like you to look into. It's not something that they're going to say today, okay, you need to do this, and you need to have it ready for tomorrow. There, there's ample opportunity, ample time to be able to squeeze things in. And actually, I'm actually going to go to Ms. Malinowski to take this further. Chelsea has three little children as well, so I think she's probably the, the perfect person to actually expand on my answer.
Yeah, I mean, I think generally speaking, um, where this committee is gonna be so large that all the meetings will probably be at night unless there's, you know, quick things that just need to be signed off on. That would be my guess. Um, in terms of kind of having that balance, um, I think it's just helpful to have an iPad and, you know, when you're waiting for kids to get picked up or, you know, at an activity or something, I just usually have my iPad and go through whatever I need to look at. Um, so you you know, I think you just plug and play, um, you know, as needed or, you know, over the weekend, you know, Sunday night, try to get caught up on whatever you have upcoming in the week. I mean, usually public, you know, my public meetings have to be posted forty-eight hours in advance. And usually if there's gonna be materials, um, the chairs usually try to get it out um at least two days before. So you have ample time, whether it's, you know, early in the morning or after your kids go to bed to to check on it. So I mean, I definitely get it done intermittently, I would say, um, when I have time.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chelsea. So I I will add just one point that I think Mr. Stivers made. Um, that's so important is that um having a parent with young children as they go through this process that will, you know, at at some point go potentially to NAREI is, I think it's important. And I think it's it's a, it's a refreshing and it's a healthy perspective to have on this building committee. So I I thank you again for stepping forward. Um, you, we're going to take a vote after we do our second interview. So you're welcome to certainly hang around. And um, Vanessa, if we can bring Mr. Davis over. Good evening, Mr. Davis. You are muted. If you could unmute, I don't know if you're planning to uh have video also or just uh, there you are. Good evening, welcome.
And I unmuted.
Wonderful. So I'm not gonna go through the whole same thing again. I'm sure you heard. If you'd like to, uh, first off, thank you for stepping forward. Um, and then I'll just kind of let you introduce yourself and and tell us what interests you the most in this.
Sure. Uh, Mark Davis, uh, I've lived up on Skylar Drive. Uh, good grief, when the road was still a dirt road up here. Both of my children went through uh the school system. Uh, my daughter is a teacher at Algonquin, and my grandson is a first grader down at Finn. Uh, I have extensive uh construction uh experience. I don't even recall how far back my resume went. Um, but Perrini, RH White Construction out in Worcester. Uh, and in the later years, I have uh become a permanent consultant for National Grid uh with land use issues around railroads. So anytime uh they look to get involved with a project near, under, over a railroad, gas and electric, uh, I'm the guy they call to uh arrange those permits. Uh, I've been a home-based employee since two thousand and eight. Um, so I'm a little less used to Zoom. Uh, I think I'm on Teams meeting for about six hours a day. Um, and have have learned to be available anytime at at any point in time. Uh, I was on the planning board years ago. I've been on the MBTA Study Committee a couple times. I was on the uh selectmen reorganization when we uh organized to get five selectmen versus three. Uh, Bonnie Fanna for years was trying to get me to be on the ZBA, and I kept telling her, uh, no, I'll sit back for a while. So I probably haven't been as involved in the uh town in the last several years. But uh, as some of you know, I've been involved in the schools for a long time, and this is kind of right up my alley.
Wonderful, thank you. And and thank you for your past service to the town as well. Very much appreciated. We'll start with Mr. Healy.
I I don't think I have to ask any questions about um experience of of length of meetings. Um, so some of those committees you were involved with uh took up a lot of hours. Um, is, I guess my only question is, uh, again, you've been involved um, uh, forever. Um, is, um, is, is it, I I suspect the answer is no, but I just wanna make sure. Your involvement with National Grid is not an issue in terms of any sort of intersection? I I can't imagine it, um, you know, rising to the level of conflict, but even any sort of intersection with with what will be going on with the building committee. I'm assuming the answer to that is no.
No, no, no. My my role there is rather obscure. Uh, and there's only two of us in New England that do this kind of work. Um, but it gives me um some insight into actually some of the green programs that they're working on on the gas side. And I I get involved in all sorts of other projects because even the uh solar and the wind all have to come back to the mainland somewhere. Uh, and invariably, they're crossing railroads, and that's where I come into it. So no, there's no conflict. Uh, I think it's almost hand in hand with with what I'd be doing here.
Okay, great. Uh, and again, thanks for uh volunteering um after a hiatus. I'm good, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Uh, welcome, Mr. Davis, and thanks for volunteering also. Uh, you're a glutton for punishment here. If you've survived those other committees and coming back for more, so I admire your courage.
I've always been a glutton.
Yeah. Um, have you been following the conversations around this project uh through various school, school committee meetings and other group meetings at this point, or not so much?
I have um seen kind of the overall picture, uh, but uh more than happy to read up on uh what I may have missed in in all of that, and I'm sure we'll have time to review it.
Do you have experience with the state financing of these kinds of projects? We're certainly getting involved more with that.
Yeah, other than um what I did with the uh Algonquin project. Uh, no, but financial analysis was always part of what I did in in the construction and uh the other work I've done in the past. So I don't, I don't see that as anything that's all that difficult.
Well, it certainly sounds like you've got an ideal technical background for this. So again, I think you'd be a great addition to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Dennington.
Hi, Mr. Davis. Um, I agree with Sam that um it's, I think this is gonna be a useful um set of qualifications to bring to this committee. Could you just tell me more about the Algonquin Regional Project um that you were referring to? Since I I moved here in two thousand thirteen, so it would be useful for me just to understand a little bit about um what that was. I see Marty smiling, so I think he's indicating it would take a very long explanation.
Yeah, how long do you have, Andrew?
Well, you you missed all the fun. In uh, around two thousand, prior to that, uh, the town had an opportunity either to expand the existing school or propose a new school and actually split from the district. I was kind of in the leadership role of the group that wanted to keep Algonquin and worked hard for all of that and actually almost got arrested for holding signs with students when the town hall was over at uh Data General. And Paul Berry, God bless him, uh, managed to uh get us all safely uh where we could hold our Save Algonquin signs. But there's a lot more to that story.
I think that's a record for town meeting. Huge.
But I I appreciate then that you've got experience in handling complex municipal public policy issues. And I think that that's gonna be a useful set of experiences.
Well, the one, the one side thing is my next-door neighbor, and I'm staring out at his former house, actually led the effort uh for the Southborough Schools. Uh, the the two of us didn't speak for a couple of years. Uh, but uh managed to bury the hatchet a few years ago, and he's, he's moved to uh Ashland. Uh, but uh, we managed to sit and uh have some pretty decent conversations after all the dust settled.
I'm hoping this is not gonna be as controversial as that's.
Uh, I hope not.
I'll say it, Andrew. Yeah, okay. Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Davis. Thank you for um putting in for um this committee. I don't have any further questions. I think your background uh fits in well with um what we're looking for um for building this committee. So I look forward to um your appointment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, so I think we have two great candidates before us. There are, I know, Sam, you had asked about the technical piece, but we have um uh two great candidates before us. If anyone has no further questions or discussion, I would certainly entertain a motion to appoint Ann Dorada, I hope I didn't pronounce that wrong, um Kemper and Mr. Davis to the NAREI Building Committee.
So move. Term expires when?
Uh, let's see, six-thirty twenty-three. Thank you, Sam.
So move.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Dennington. Marty seconded Sam.
All right.
Yep. Ms. Malinowski. Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Healy.
Hi.
And Ms. Brashow, I. Thank you both for stepping forward. Uh, you'll get a letter from the town. And uh, we look forward to your continued success as as we move forward with the NAREI Committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
I am.
All right, next up, discussion of tree warden appointment is Karen. I see, I'm hoping that's her. See if we could bring Karen over. Hi, Karen. Is this the right Karen? There you are. Great, thank you. So we asked Karen to come, I mean, i- at the last discussion we had with Planning Board, we had talked about a uh a a path forward. And I think um the main point of this discussion tonight is is short-term, what, you know, we're looking to do. I think Karen's kind of uh pigeonholed a little bit at this point. So um, that's hopefully what we can take away from tonight. I know Karen had sent a memo. I think there was um some misunderstanding maybe regarding that you requesting a tree hearing. You weren't requesting it from the Board of Selectmen, correct? You were just notifying us that that's the path you were gonna go down?
No, um, it's, so right now, technically, the Selectmen are the tree warden. Um, and I do need a, I I need a hearing um for two trees up at the Deerfoot Flag Interchange. And to be clear, let's mark it that we have talked about that Deerfoot and Flag Road interchange as part of the various trees project. That is um a project that we've talked about several times, right? It's part of the um Flag Road Safety Study. Um, that intersection is changing. I've sent um letters to all the people who live right at the intersection. Um, but there are two trees that are supposed to come down. I need to have a hearing on those. And um, one's a chapter eighty-seven hearing because they're live trees. And because scenic road, they also need a hearing under chapter forty with the planning board. So based on master general law, they have to, has to be a joint hearing. Um, but yes, I am, so I am requesting that we get that hearing going. A date certain so we can advertise and get that going so that it doesn't hold up the project.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, if it's not voted to shake them down, then I don't know what we do about that intersection, but we need time to be able to fix something or do something.
All right, hold on two seconds. Mr. Dennington got kicked out. I think he's trying to get back in. Uh, Vanessa, if we could move, Selectman Dennington back in. And Andrew, you're back, you're muted, and your video is off.
Thank you. We're not sure what happened there. Um, after we moved to this, I just kind of vaporized. And but I'm back here, thanks.
Okay, so I guess the discussion is is still somewhat the same, but it's twofold, Karen. So process-wise, we need to have a joint hearing with the planning board as the Board of Selectmen, as the tree warden?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless you appoint someone else at some point, um, but we do need one.
Okay, so how quickly are you looking to have this done first?
Uh, well, since we have to post it two weeks in advance, um, i- if we can have it at the beginning of April, because they are looking, the contractors looking at coming in and doing work um in mid-April.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, it's the tree warden's responsibility to post the hearing notice, correct?
Um, if it's, if it's an eighty-seven tree hearing, yes. If so, um, or if it's a joint, yes.
So it's still our responsibility, even if it's, I'm, again, I'm just trying to understand the process here.
So if it's just a scenic road, my understanding is, um, if it's a dead tree on a scenic road and the tree warden says it's a hazardous tree, they don't need an eighty-seven hearing. Um, and then the planning board would have to post, and they'd have to advertise and have it done. That's, that's my understanding from our meeting with Jay Tallerman back in uh, I don't know if it was January, December? Can't remember when we had that.
Okay, so this, where these aren't hazard trees.
Correct.
They're live trees. Okay, so we need to schedule a joint meeting with Planning Board. We can certainly, Mr. Purple, if we could reach out tomorrow and see when the, Sam?
The Planning Board met yesterday, and so they would normally, I think they set a date to three or four weeks out for their next meeting. So it might be more convenient if we could figure out when they're gonna meet next and just attach our meeting to that.
Yep, no, that's, that was my intent, Sam. I know, if we could have Mr. Purple reach out and find when the next Planning Board meeting is that we can get this on the agenda. And then just clarify who's going to be posting the hearing notice. So, okay, long ago I clarified that, Karen. I thought completely different, so thank you. Um, does anyone have any comment or question on that piece for Karen? Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm I'm sitting here looking through um uh Mass General Law eighty-seven. And um, my recollection is similar to yours. I just, I I'm assuming that it's operation of law, that if a tree warden has not been appointed, that it reverts to the Board of Selectmen. I'm just trying to try, trying to find the provision that actually states that. Sam, you're nodding. Do you know the provision?
I I think it was in um eighty-seven, whatever the, not, not the um, not the scenic road one.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of subparts eighty-seven. That's the uh.
Which is it, Karen? Do you remember?
Um, oh, I was gonna say, it might be in the special act for the DPW, um, where the tree warden duties.
Okay, I will, I just, that that's my only, that, that is, that is the understanding that it reverts to the Board of Selectmen if, in this instance, the tree warden has resigned, and so there's no appointed tree warden. And I'll track it down. I I I'll track down on my own. Uh, you know, we don't need to do it now in real time, but I'll track down the provision and just satisfy myself.
Yeah, and and Marty, if there's anything different than that, we're, we're meeting on the twenty-fourth anyway. So we can certainly, if we needed to, address it at that point.
Okay.
Sam, go ahead.
The planning, the Planning Board meetings are March twenty-eighth for warrant articles, it says. And then April eleventh is a regular meeting. So maybe the March twenty-eighth, if we, I don't think we can get notices posted in time for that, probably. But those are the two dates they advertised last night.
Has to be in the newspaper two weeks also, so even if you put it in the newspaper, so we, but you're meeting on the
On the fifth.
Right, which would be fine.
Yeah, okay, so maybe we'll invite Planning Board to our meeting on the fifth, Sam, if uh, if we can get that done soon.
Good.
Okay, no problem. So Mark, we'll uh, we'll coordinate that tomorrow. Okay, so which leads us kind of to the the second point that I I was hoping that we could kind of talk about in in the interim. Um, I don't know that that, until we figure out a long-term solution, this board uh wants to be tree warden. Uh-huh, yeah, I'm with you, Marty. So I I think, you know, Karen had had talked about um in her email, you know, uh, potentially there's the opportunity, short-term, to bring in an arborist that could assist with some of these things. Karen, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, well, we did try to get some prices for you for arborists, and we ended up Well, we did try to get some prices for you for arborists and we ended up talking to a couple of tree removal companies, but from past experience, no one seems to trust the arborist from a tree removal company. So I think that's not going to be useful. We looked on the American Society Consulting Arborist, the ASCA consultants.org. We called a few of those. They charge out about a hundred and fifty dollars a person an hour. So you get like twenty-seven hours, I think at the forty-four thousand dollar stipend, which some of has already been used. So with what's left, the thing is, is with these trees, so I have twenty-six trees on scenic, on scenic roads, because we're all on scenic roads at this point. Twenty-six trees that are dead, the residents want down, that need to have a planning board hearing, would not need a chapter eighty-seven hearing. As long as we had someone who said, yes, we bless that as a hazard tree because they're the tree warden. Planning can go, they're, they're going to look at and say this tree's a bit. But we haven't taken anything down, obviously, because we're at the standstill. If we those two trees that we know they're alive, there's really no issue with needing an arborist report to say they're alive. It's just an issue of do we, is the crossing from Flag Road to the Trotter School Walkway important enough with, with having the handicapped access to that crossing, having a crossing there that's signalized and everything more important than the two trees. And that decision has to be made at a level obviously above the tree warden. That's a, that's a decision that is, technically, that's where I think the tree warden being the selectman makes sense because that's a, that's a decision of quality of life in the town, not, it's not really about the trees at that point.
Okay. Questions for Karen regarding that? Chelsea.
Thanks Karen. So are you saying that we could benefit from having an arborist for hazardous or dead trees, but we don't necessarily need an arborist to be the tree warden for trees that are being looked at to be taken down for some function and not for the health of the tree?
Basically, yes. So if, if everyone agrees the tree is healthy, then nor, then you would have a chap, you would have to have a tree hearing anyway under eighty-seven. And the tree warden's going to determine, and it's going to be based on the reason to take the tree down. And that's what the planning board is going to be looking at too. So the reason, if the reasons, the driver, it's not, the, the arborist isn't necessarily important because everyone's saying it's a live tree. We know that.
Yeah.
It's not, right? When but the planning board still has to weigh in because under the scenic road bylaw, it can't be trimmed, it can't be, nothing. You can't touch a tree without a hearing, period. Dead, half-dead, unless it's across the road, then I can move it. And put it back to the side.
Is that it, Chelsea?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just kind of processing what Karen just said. And I mean, at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the tree warden to be an arborist, it just seems, it seems like we, we almost need to have like two paths, but I don't know if you can do that, that way, because then effectively of two tree wardens.
So I have talked to a bunch of other towns, see what they do. All right. Most towns are set up like us where DPW is a tree warden. They would use an arborist when they needed some specific thing. Most towns do not have one hundred and forty-four scenic roads. Most towns also, or a lot of them are, okay, great, the tree warrants taking down these trees or has deemed them. Only two towns actually have a tree warden that is, out of, out of the ones who answered me, which is so out of eight, two of them, which would be Natick and Westboro, actually have a certified arborist on staff. I asked about sharing them, can't. It's not the way it's working. But they're on staff because they happen to have a, a tree division. So so I'm sorry, it's not Natick. I'm sorry, Shrewsbury also, because they have, they have a tree with their electric light. So they have a tree division. They don't have an arborist. He didn't, he, they said they have a contracted arborist that they use if they need them, but the tree, but they have their own tree division also, but everyone else doesn't have a tree division. They're more of a DPW like us. And the DPW is the tree warden, somebody in there. They take trees down with contract and when they have questions or they need something, they, they get, they get an arborist's opinion on anything that's live. It's just right now, even, I mean, we have, we have a third, a second Maya grant. So a third system right now going of an inventory done by an arborist, but it doesn't seem like planning is even interested in, in, they, they think that he's being too liberal with the health of the trees and saying that they're, they're too many, like too many are slated to be removed or come down or should that are recommended to come down. So it doesn't seem, and, and he's not related to any removal company or anything, but it doesn't seem like the DPW choosing the arborist makes sense at this point either. If planning has control of all the trees because all of the scenic roads in town, or all the roads are scenic in town, or, or such a majority of them. So I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, we have, we have these Maya grants. I'm hoping that people find them useful, but it doesn't sound like planning wants to use them as in an effort to determine tree health and whether or not to remove a tree that somebody has, would like a hearing on. From what I understand, I, they haven't had any tree hearings that I've seen. Again, under forty C, they have to have them. Most of the trees are dead that people are calling about. If they're not dead, they're still calling us. Right? But we're, we're telling people, we're gonna, you know, where if they call, we're like, well, you really have to go to planning now. We haven't had a lot of people calling recently. The same people that have been, the twenty-six trees that we have are in a list. Those right now, those people haven't called us, or a lot of them haven't recently. So when they do, we have to send them to planning at this point because they're on scenic roads, but we do know the trees are dead.
So Karen, and, and what is the timeframe on having a hearing and getting these twenty-six trees removed? I mean, do you have it in the budget now? Are you looking to do something next fiscal year? I mean, what is your timeframe on getting the twenty-six?
Um, so our, our eighty-five thousand dollar line item for tree removal is, is partially expended from some work. We have some work to do to remove stumps that, not stumps, but butts from the stump dump. And then there'll be, I can't remember. I'm sorry. I didn't take that number with me. I don't have the exact number, but there's money, there is money left to do a contract. However, if we want to put it aside for an arborist to look at, then I don't want to spend any more than I don't know what, because the time isn't, I don't have control of the arborist's time. If they're going to planning board meeting, I can't control how many hours they have to spend waiting or how many questions are going to, so I, I can't. I just, I don't want to touch the, the line item beyond what I have to right now. Tree falls and it's on a house, I have to get a contractor and I have to pull it up. I gotta get a crane out. It's happened rarely, but it has happened. So we've been lucky. We've had these windstorms, but most of the trees are dead enough that they're actually not falling because they don't really leave. So so I think what, at this point, we're looking at is kind of tucking that money, figuring out what the process is going to be. And then next year, or right before the year ends, letting out a contract, seeing if we can get anything in before the end of the year. But as soon as, as soon as you have a plan, we can let a contract. It's not a problem for us. It makes more sense, I think, for a department to run a contract than a contractor or than a board. I also, you know, we, we have to help a lot. We, we, we do a lot with the tree contractors between doing road safety, you know, directing traffic, helping move things around. We use our loader rather than have, that have to pay for them to come in with certain pieces of equipment. So there's, we, we do have, it makes more sense for us to work with them and be able to help them out with the contract to minimize the cost so we can get more, more work done. One thing that, so if, if there is a process that gets put in place, and I don't, you know, we do have people in town that are arborists. We do have one person who, who might be willing to do the tree warden work if they, planning board would agree that they were a qualified person and they would use them. That person though is not someone who's necessarily going to write a report for us or anything, but they could at least call people, talk to them, and then we could go out with them, mark the trees and get the hearing started at least.
Okay, Chelsea, were you done? Okay, Sam?
Yeah, a couple of comments, I guess. One is, just to confirm, when Southborough passed the ten thousand population number, which happened recently, that actually increased the requirements for a tree warden.
Right. We, we met that. We do meet that, or one of our, or two of our people, I think, actually do, but.
Yep. So we have to keep that in mind. And second, my, my understanding is that just based on a variety of comments I've heard from folks along the way, I think it's, it is important to have a certified arborist in this role because people, I think, need to have confidence that the individual has professional qualifications, et cetera. I think Karen makes a good point is that you need somebody probably who's not associated with a tree removal company who may have some financial incentives in there that people are suspicious of. But the other side of it too, is, as I've attended some of these hearings, I mean, it seems to me that the the world divides into three different categories here pretty cleanly. You've got dead trees that even if you have an arborist in that clearly appear dead, nobody's going to get upset about arguing whether this tree is dead or not. And you have clearly live trees that, as Karen is suggesting for the ones at Deerfoot Flag, that again, the issue is not what an arborist thinks about their health. And the, the more highly discussed ones are the ones that appear alive, but an arborist says, nope, that tree has a, you know, limited lifespan for whatever reason. Those are the trees that seem to generate the most comment. So I think that at least for me, having a way to get an arborist and Karen, your suggestion about a local person for contract work sounds pretty interesting. And also, if there are other towns like Shrewsbury who may have a contractor out there who might be willing to split some time with us, hopefully for a rate lower than the hundred fifty an hour, but you never know. That, that kind of short-term contract hourly approach might be useful in the near term as we sort out what a longer-term solution could be. So it seems again to me that you got to have an arborist and you got to find somebody who again has ability to split their time with somebody else, because I don't think it makes sense for us to have a full-time arborist on staff given the volume of trees we have. So again, working with the planning board, doing the short-term thing for the Deerfoot Flag one to have that hearing and then work to come up with a longer-term solution that gives arborist support and gives a way to appropriately classify trees and get public input in the right kind of way, subject to the new scenic road information that we now have. So that seems to me to be the path forward.
Well, I, I think just to comment on that, having a certified arborist available to consult and talk to about a tree that's questionable makes sense. But for the town to spend any kind of money on somebody with, it's like asking a lawyer, right, to write the memo to you about the tree warden. Why, why would we do that? Why, why are we spending that kind of money on something that we have maybe a question about how, how a tree law works? Yes, you want the expert opinion, but when some, and as you said, Sam, we, we did those hearings back in October to prove, to kind of show, look, all these trees that we're hearing are dead. And there were a few that weren't, and those ones, we would have had hearings on because they were not dead. The ones that were dead, we wouldn't have normally had a hearing on. They would have come down. And that's, that's sort of the point there. But now they can't because now we know hazard trees, it doesn't matter. They can't come down without a planning board hearing. They still wouldn't have needed an arborist to come. We had that arborist walk through with us, and that's the guy, local guy I'm talking about, because people weren't trusting the process, but seeing the process, it seems to me that you understand these trees are dead. We can post the picture of all the trees that need to come down. And actually, if planning's having a hearing and they think they're dead, why should they call an arborist? Anything they have specific questions about have a separate hearing for, because then they're questionable. But get the stuff that's dead down.
And that's where I was headed Karen, I think, because again, my recollection is the planning board was very comfortable with that arborist recommendation. I don't think there was a single tree on that list, those lists from October two years ago or whatever, that the planning board was particularly concerned about after they heard what the arborist had to say. So it seems to me, again, there's a process in here where you've got a, an arborist who comes through and, you know, maybe he doesn't do a full fifty-page report on every tree, but makes a recommendation for the tree. And if it's, it's potentially questionable, then you do more detail on a particular tree. But just having a qualified arborist say that, yep, that tree's dead is an easy thing to, to opine on. And again, my guess is, I can't speak for planning board or anybody else. My guess is that that wouldn't be controversial. So that's what I, I would hope for is a process that allows for professional input in a metered way, where, where you need intense review analysis, you've got it, where you need the, the drive-by and say, that's a dead tree. You can do it that way as well. So you, you meter the, the analysis to the, to the need or the, the uncertainty around a particular tree. So I'm hoping there's a solution like that in there.
Well, I, I agree, and I'm sorry for being argumentative about this, but if you look on our website and there are tree reports that people are disagreeing with and want to, want to contradict, and they were done by an arborist, not really, not even from, yeah, like not related at all to any contractor we've ever had. We found this person and we asked him to look at trees. And people are questioning because it came from the DPW, right? They're questioning, well, he wants these trees down. If you drive, even in the winter, when there's a leaf on the trees, any of the trees, you can drive down Flag Road and you can see which trees are dead. I mean, you can tell, right? Then there's some other ones that won't leave out that you thought maybe were okay. But everyone has to remember that, that, those two years of, and this started the whole problem, but the two years of gypsy moss with that one drought year after, or kind of like the second year of the gypsy moss, a lot of those big old trees couldn't, they, they didn't make it through that. And that's where all our, that's where the problems are and why there's so many. Because we had gotten to the point that there were much, you know, we had been able to take care of a lot of the hazard trees because the town has been very generous in helping us, give us some money to actually get trees down. We, we haven't done much of anything this year with it. And so like I said, we know there's new process because of the, because we now know they have to be heard if they're a scenic road. But I don't think having the tree warden be an arborist makes any sense. It's, it, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't make sense. It's not what we need. What we need is somebody that meets the mass general law, has the pesticide license they need and has a history in arboriculture. Doesn't mean they have to have gone to school for arboriculture. They have to have worked in arboriculture. We have that. We have people in town who run tree companies who, who could probably do that because they, as long as they have the pesticide license. I mean, you could, but you're not going to pay them a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the expertise specifically asking for an arborist.
Well, again, I think there's the issue of public confidence, which may cost money here. So that's a decision that is a budget-driven decision that I guess ultimately we'll have to make.
All right, Sam. Thank you. Mr. Healy.
You started out Lisa saying that, that what we're looking to do, I think, tonight is come up with a short-term solution. I will tell you, having listened to this discussion, my head is spinning a little bit. It, it is, there is no question in my mind that this doesn't have to be this complicated. And I'm not sure who or what is responsible for making it this complicated, but that's, that has got to be untangled. And I, I guess the first place you start is what other towns are doing. I just can't imagine that other towns are, are going through these gymnastics. If they are, then, then maybe we have to. But, but again, it just seems I'm, I'm not looking to put blame on anybody, but this is too complicated for the issue of, is a tree dead? I, I mean, if, if, it, it just strikes me that if the town is going to pay money for a professional and, and whatever. and, and whatever through a process that has yet to play out, there, there's, there's comfort that this person is a professional. The idea that, 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 I mean, you got what, this board is going to sit and, and decide that the arborist is wrong? Or the, 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 the person with, I mean, that, that's just crazy. Uh, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're going to spend the money for somebody with professional qualifications, presumably we're going to trust those professional qualifications. I mean, I remember when we had a bunch of trees taken down in, in, uh, in our yard and I don't know if he was an arborist or not, but he was a, he was a, he was a tree guy and came out and he pointed out all the trees that were dead. And I went, really? And he explained why. And, and layperson can't look at a tree and determine whether or not it's dead. I mean, we don't have that, it's, it's a, it's a professional training sort of thing. So, uh, again, that's a longer-term discussion, but I, I mean, if the town is going to spend money for somebody with professional qualifications to, to pass judgment on the health of trees, but then we're not going to trust that judgment somehow? That strikes me as crazy. And that might be one of the reasons why this is unnecessarily complicated. I mean, you said, Sam, that most of the comments are when someone says that, uh, when, again, someone with a professional training looks at a tree and says it's dead and people don't believe it. Well, we, we, it, we, we can't, if we're going to pay somebody to make those professional judgments, it just strikes me, we have to trust them. Um, otherwise pay somebody else. Um, but, uh, but I, I don't understand why we would go through the process of finding somebody with those sort of professional qualifications to potentially disregard their recommendations that are essentially scientific. Now, that's longer term. Short-term, Karen, and this, I think got lost in the whole thing, how many trees are there that are um, uh, uh, an acute issue right now? That need to be addressed one way or the other by whatever process, um, needs to address it? How, how many trees are we talking about?
Um, we only have complaints on 26. So that's, we.
All right, stop. So 26 trees?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I mean, does it make sense, even if it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, to bring someone in? An arborist or otherwise, whatever the, whatever the level of professional qualification to look at those trees um, and make a determination about whether or not they're healthy or not healthy. If they're not healthy, presumably, I mean, we can have a hearing, whoever is responsible for the hearing. But again, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hire somebody with professional scientific qualifications, it just strikes me, we need to trust that person's judgment. Otherwise, it's, it's anecdotal judgments by folks who don't have any sort of training in that area. That just strikes me as crazy. Um, and, and presumably there'll be a bright line of trees that are healthy and not healthy, and then determine what process is necessary to address what, if anything, to do with those trees. I mean, is it any more complicated than that?
So Marty, I think one of the things I will just say that makes, and I think Karen brought the point up, that makes this process a little harder is, in, in looking at other towns, most towns don't have as many scenic roads as Southborough does. And I think that, that creates a, a partial challenge. And, and I agree, to have somebody come out, Karen, if you could get a cost, what it would take for somebody to come out and just look at these 26 trees, I imagine a dead tree is pretty obvious that it's a dead tree. If, if we could get somebody to come out, maybe, um, we could resolve this. So let, let me just make sure that I'm clear and I understand. On the dead tree, a hazard tree, and I guess just a clear definition on hazard, but on these trees that are dead, they would still require on a scenic road to go through a con- a consolidated planning board here. So to me, go ahead.
What do you mean by consolidated?
Well, a, a joint hearing with, with planning board and.
They don't have to be joint. My understanding is it just has to be a hearing under 40C. So is 40C dictates planning board? Eighty-seven, chapter eighty-seven dictates tree warden.
Right, but with these trees potentially maybe on scenic roads, any removal of even a dead tree, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, on a scenic road would have to still have a planning board hearing.
Yes, just the planning board, not, not a consolidated hearing, just, just a planning board hearing.
Okay, so I think it's, it's two steps Marty, based on what you said. We bring somebody in to look at these 26 trees, we give it to planning board, they can do their public hearings. But in the short term, I think the, the question is on the two trees on Flag and Deerfoot, that if we do a hearing, a joint hearing with planning board on four, five, Karen, you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we know these trees are, are a live tree. So.
Two at Deerfoot, yes.
Yes. So we really don't need an arborist to tell us these trees are alive because we know that. So the, the point of the joint hearing would then to be to talk about the safety of the road, why these trees are going to come down and do that through the joint hearing process, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just so I'm understanding. So, um, so I guess we're, as far as I'm concerned, I guess we're kind of somewhat set for the joint here with planning board. We don't need an arborist for that. If we could get a cost for an arborist, as Marty said, for these 26 trees, I can't imagine there's going to be a whole lot, there's not going to do what they would normally do on a live tree. I would imagine that they would be able to say it's a hazard tree, then we, we move forward with the, with the hearing under 40C with planning board.
Yes, and, um, as far, if, I mean, if the planning board wants that, I'm assuming they're going to want to use our budget for it, right? If I get, I, because I think I can get the local guy for probably not too much money to come because he is retired, but he still has his certifications. Um, so I might be able to get him, but he's not going to write a report up. We'll just have him, you know, uh, we'll, we'll walk with him. Or planning, perhaps Karina should walk with him and she should write it down so that it's, that there's the trust that it's not, the DPW is not saying, take this tree down, because that clearly is an issue. So planning saying, okay, he said that it needs to come down, have the planning board hearing on that, um, and that would, but I don't know that he would have to go to, should have to go to the hearing and speak to it if they're all dead. Now, mind you, there's no reason the planning board shouldn't go and look at these trees that are going to be posted. And they're going to know they're dead the minute they look at them also. So it's, um, you know, I'm not saying not to have an arborist, but it's just one of those things that, again, some stuff is so dead, it's so obvious that the planning board.
But Karen, but Karen, it's, 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 it is, it is, it is short money for, for, for what, whether or not it's legitimate or not legitimate for public confidence. And it gets the trees addressed one way or the other. And if, and if, if they're, uh, again, I, who knows? Again, I, I can tell you, I, I can tell you that I, that, that, that I can look at a tree I think is healthy and, and somebody who's professional will tell me that it's not. I don't know, maybe the same thing is true. I look at a tree and I think it's dead and there's an explanation as to why it's not. I don't know. I, again, I don't have expertise in this area. Most of us do not, but that's why having somebody with expertise say, geez, just check a box. Is it dead? Yes or no? It doesn't seem more complicated than that.
With a picture Marty, put a picture of the tree, then, yeah.
And Karen, this is the same gentleman who did the forty-some-odd trees that, uh, back in a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Who I, who I found to be very credible. And the planning board representative, I thought, uh, also found that evaluation to be credible. I don't recall any substantial disagreement with, uh, from the planning board discussions of those trees. Again, I, I can't speak for them. But again, it seemed to me that he added a, a useful amount of professional credibility around that evaluation process and had good explanations for trees that were questionable and those explanations were accepted by all the folks who walked around during that process. So I think that could be a good approach.
Okay, Chelsea, go ahead. And then Andrew, I'll come to you next.
Karen, do you have a list of the trees? And are that, do you post them on your um, site or how? How do you keep track of them and do you share it?
So this list of trees that I have, the 26, um, they're through work orders, um, from people calling. The ones on the site were, um, is an inventory that we were trying to do to, so that we knew how, uh, what we had on a street that we needed to take care of. Um, and I don't foresee us, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm hoping that the planning board would use this inventory and would at least, you know, because you could just go and if we hear all the trees that are dead, then we can get them down as needed, right? Or as we can, someone complains, we can take it down. Or, okay, we have some money, we can take these down. Um, because right now, obviously, we can't take anything down, but to hear them ahead of time would be great, but I'm not sure that the, um, that, that, so the list we have on the website now is part of this inventory. And it's just a overall street tree health.
So can I ask this? So if there's 26 specific trees, I don't think it'll take a lot to do something up and get it on the website. Then planning board can take a look at the trees, the public can take a look at the trees in advance, you know, while we go through this process of having an arborist take a picture and check a box. Um, is there any way that we could get that done and get that up on these 26 trees?
Yes, we, we can definitely do that, um, again.
And again, this is shorter term, not big global picture. Uh, I, I think that's a, a much bigger discussion than tonight, but I think that this is a good, a, a, a good path forward. And again, if we could get those trees, get them posted, then, um, anybody who wants to can go take a look at them. And then that should alleviate some of the concerns before the public hearings as well.
And get the list published.
To post them, I need to post a hearing date. So I just would need that, but then I can get them posted, but, um, I again suggest that planning board members take a hard look at them with the planner and she walk with the arborist also, because it's out of the DPW's hands now, but we're on the receiving end of the calls, the complaints and the criticism.
We can, we can certainly make that request, Karen. Um, okay, Andrew, we kind of skipped over you through this whole thing. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so then, I think I'm going to try to summarize. Um, the short-term plan is no need for the arborist for the Flag, uh, Deerfoot tree. There'll be a hearing on that at April 5th. We're going to get a, a ballpark quote on the arborist to review the 26 trees about which people complained that are dead. And that's taking us through the next, like, two months or so. Um, I mean, the, the, an issue that I see and I, I do not, I don't know if we need to get into, to it now, because it's kind of borderline between short-term and, and long-term is, how does this affect DPW's budget for FY 23? Where we were reusing, uh, a pretty, um, affordable stipend for the tree warden. Select board does not want to be the tree warden. I do not want to have, um, you know, our meetings are already quite long and, um, don't, I don't want to be the tree warden. So how do we all account that? I've thought, and I may be just totally wrong on this, that the line item for the tree experts, eighty-five thousand dollars, which has been kind of steady, that because there's been kind of this holdup, we haven't been taking as ma- down as many trees, that there might be some money in that line item that could be used for hiring other on a consultant basis, someone as, as the tree warden. But, um, again, this is just raising a a future issue, which I don't know, this is beyond the scope of what we're talking about tonight.
No, I think it's a good point, Andrew, but I, I, I just think the goal of tonight was, was short-term. I think in between now and the next few weeks, we can take a look at some, what some other towns do as well as Karen can, you know, continue our conversations on trying to get a quote. I mean, it's tough to make a decision when we don't know ultimately what an arborist or someone qualified, what those costs might be on a longer-term basis. So Andrew, I think this is definitely continued discussion. Um, um, and Karen, if, if, if you get any information at all before four, five, you know, uh, Andrew, we can put it back on the agenda on four, five to have a longer-term discussion on, you know, where we want to go. But I don't think we have, again, we don't know what the costs are, and I agree with your point. You know, looking into, as we get closer to the budget, how this may impact Karen's budget next year. I mean, it's great if she's got eighty-five thousand in a line item, but it, it, it's great to have that, but if she doesn't have the money to take the trees down, then we have a whole nother issue as well. Yeah, so I, I hear your point. Um, I, I'll, alternatively, at this point, we'll schedule a larger discussion on this and hopefully Karen, if it's not by the 5th, then, then our second meeting in April, Andrew, we can, you know, try to chart a clearer path. And again, I, I want to spend a little bit more time on eighty-seven and 40C and I know Marty, you were going to look up a few things as well. So, um, tentatively, we'll do it for four, five. Um, and, and Karen, in the meantime, um, I think there's, there's some level of path and, and, um, you know, I'll have further discussions with you also, I know, on this as well.
And, um, I was looking at the chat and I see that Marnie Houlihan was asking about, she hasn't seen this list. No one's seen the list of those trees that we have work order because we don't have a process. So I'm happy, I'll send it right up and, um, you get it, Karina will have it tomorrow. But it'll be on the website, we'll do the whole thing. Um, again, I can't post them until I have a date. Um, I don't have a problem using eighty-five thousand because I agree, at this point, we haven't, um, done anything specific with it. However, um, again, it's not, if, if, if the consultant's not under our control, if the consultant should come out of a different person's budget.
Agreed, agreed. I think the, go ahead Marty.
But, um, Karen, you said a couple of different times, you can't post it until we have a, until you have a hearing date. Couldn't you, couldn't you at least list the, the, uh, the, the trees and the locations?
Oh, I can, I can give the, yes, I can give a location and everything and we, we, we actually have a number on the trees, so I can have all that. But to put the actual posting on the tree.
Okay.
You actually have to.
It's just, it was no, it was nomenclature. Okay, I would put, I would, maybe it's already, maybe it's already up, but I would, I would scatter it as far and wide as you can. Put it up on, on your, on your website, send it to the planning board, send it to us, uh, just a list of those 26 trees. Boom. No one can complain that they weren't aware of it.
Yep. Okay, Karen, thank you for that. Um, that leads us into our second discussion for Karen. Capital recommendation for oversight of road projects. Is Mr. Malinowski in the audience? He is. If we can, um, bring him over. Good evening, Jason, you are muted.
Hi, how is everyone?
There you are. Okay, first question is, where are the littles?
Do you have any view, do you have any views on trees?
How quiet it is, you know? Go see if I can make it through both topics.
All right, go ahead, Jason. You have the floor.
Um, so, um, I submitted a, uh, brief email to the board in advance of this discussion. Um, as you all know, Capital has spent a lot of time talking about roads, um, this year. And, um, yep, let's see, it was too quiet, right? Um, Capital spent a lot of time talking about roads and one of the most important things we wanted to try to formalize in the warrant is, um, where the 400, um, if that's the number that is going to go to town meeting four, actually goes. And I know there's a lot of planning that Karen does, um, in the background and, you know, really where, um, we thought the, the transparency could, could help the process and help people to see the roads that are on DPW's watch list and the ones that are coming up would help for two reasons. One, to help people understand that there is funding available and where it's going, but two, um, to show people that there is a plan, but there's also deferred maintenance um, list, right? And, and we candidly have some catching up to do, um, in certain areas. And, um, it would allow the, the town to make educated decisions on how much we should be allocating towards road projects moving forward. I know every year, it's a wide topic of discussion well before Capital ever existed of how much should we put? Is it 300? Is it 400? Is it 325? And, um, we thought it would be prudent this year for the select board in the warrant description under the 400, you know, there's a little write-up for each of these articles to actually list out the board or committee that you would like to work with Karen to have a public meeting of where these funds would actually be expended at a future date. Because I don't think we know exactly which roads they're going to go to now, and I don't think it's fair to Karen to put that in the warrant. But, you know, really, um, articulated around a bid process, like as Karen gets ready to go out to do a bid for a road project and she knows she's going to be using FY 23 road maintenance money, that there be a public discussion around that plan, what's going to happen with it, just so that everyone can say they're informed, but I think it'd also create better visibility into how road maintenance funds are used, um, given that they sometimes do have to collect for a few years um, before being able to use. So that was the intent of our recommendation, um, while Capital Planning is certainly. Of our recommendation, um, while capital planning is certainly happy to assist in any way, shape and form. We do not believe it was in our. Four corners of our charge to direct you how to do it. We believe that it's your warrant and that you should. Um, deliberate amongst yourselves of A, is it a good idea? And B, if it is a good idea, um, how you would um, recommend Mr. Purple to word it in the article. Now, if you choose that it's not a good idea, then capital will likely revisit our decision on whether four hundred is the right number to recommend in the warrant. Self, so um, I'll just throw that out there for, because I asked you two questions, but also kind of give you a. Sliding tree of how this could unfold depending upon where you go. So happy to answer any questions.
Awesome, Jason, thank you very much. Mr. Stivers, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I guess, um, I do like Mr. Malinowski's suggestion of having a clear picture of how that process works and uh. You know, also concerned that, uh, again, I think DPW needs some flexibility in terms of. You know, how that money is spent relative to what's available as far as contractors and bids and other projects that uh. You might want to combine that work with to get the best economics of the thing. But anything we can do to clarify that process, not only for internal departments, but for residents. I know how that works, I think it'd be helpful, so I think it's, it's worth uh. Again, adding whatever additional information we need to, to, to say as much as we reasonably can without tying our hands too much as far as being able to. Make the right economic decision about spend the money. My comment, thanks.
Sam, now do you think capital um, is the committee that should do this? To, to work with Karen and oversee this? I think that was the second part to Jason's question.
That would be my, my recommendation.
Okay, okay, thank you, Sam, appreciate it. Mr. Dennington.
And Jason, um. So I, I have the, I'm looking at the warrant and just wanted to get some clarity about kind of what specifically you would say, so. Where um, you know, there's a line item for DPW road maintenance in the, in the capital article, and then would you say? To be spent in consultation with. Blank board. If, if you're just kind of fleshed out exactly what language you, you've got in mind. Uh, you're on mute, you're on mute.
I'll use capital um, planning as the placeholder for a second, but you again, insert whatever committee you want to do. It would say, um, subject to a open public meeting. Of the capital planning committee. For discussion prior to an RFQ, RFP. Being issued or a bid being issued. Mark, you figure out the right language there.
And this is the bid that's just, this is a bid where there's just one. Bid for a global project for the year.
Yeah, so, so Karen, feel free to jump in here on kind of what I'm throwing out, but. Karen will likely go up for another road contract very soon. Um, that would encompass a lot of roads in town. And it would anticipate probably using some of this FY twenty three road money. So while we can't change what was in the wording of um, prior articles. The second that Karen anticipates using FY twenty three road maintenance money. We would have a public discussion on the overall process.
Before the bid, before an RFP was put out, before a bid was put out to.
It's always better to do it before you go and run, do a whole bid process, because then if someone disagrees with what's in there, the bid process is, is moot. Um, but certainly before the select board accepts the bid, um, would be my recommendation.
Okay. I think that for FY twenty three, for this annual town meeting, it does make sense to have that board be. Uh, capital planning committee, but I did want to come back to um, Ms. D'Maria's point, she was making about the Public Works Planning Board. And how it looks like, you know, there is a, a um, statute that says that the. The um, Public Works Planning Board should be functioning more than it should, and I think that. Going forward past this fiscal year. I think there's maybe also a role for that board. I mean, I've always had a concern that. That basically a lot of the functions of. The capital planning committee is doing a lot of what the Public Works Planning Board says on paper it should be doing. But. The Public Works Planning Board is appointed by the planning board and by the town moderator. And that's, so it's a different set of appointments, potentially a different set of. People and just Marty, to your point of, you know. The list of the twenty six trees, just get it out there, right? I think that going forward, there's probably a role for. For some mo- more people, more um, citizens, just. Getting information out to people about when things are happening, when that, that can be beneficial and increasing trust. And transparency going forward, but that's really not within our, not within so much our, our um, bailiwick right now. Um, because we don't make the appointments to the Public Works Planning Board. This is thinking ahead um, into next year. But just summarize, um, for this, for this year, I, I, I like your suggestion of um. Including in the draft warrant that, that it would be spent in. I, I didn't write down the exact words that you had, but um, subject to um, meetings before a bid went out with the capital planning committee.
And I think, Andrew, on, on, on that, I would think um, after this meeting, the intention is that Mr. Purple and I would write. Each of the i- items underneath, so that we could then um, be in the review before you actually sign the war.
Well, in, in, while you're here, what are your, do you have any general thoughts about? Public Works Planning Board, Capital Planning Committee. Again, there seems to be a tremendous amount of. Overlap. But I think that. You know, if you have boards that, there's a law that says people should be appointed to the board, should other. You know, get, get that board functioning or um. Not have it anymore, and I think that there's, there's maybe a role here. It seems like there, there could potentially be duplication, but um. It might be some beneficial duplication.
Yeah, I would say if Public Works Planning Board was as active as capital planning is right now. There would certainly be overlap duplication and um. Something that capital planning in, again, this is my own personal view, Lisa's another member here, um. We would certainly see, um, we have enough going on, um, but at the same point, um. At least my view is, as the chair of the committee, we have a responsibility to make informed. Um, recommendations to you as our appointing authority every year on capital items. And to make sure we are being transparent about what it's going to be used for, making sure it gets used appropriately in our oversight. Um, role, but also equally as important, um, making sure you're aware for deferring things too much. So that, you know, you can make some tough decisions about what to put in the warrant and whether we need to go faster. So. If Public Works Planning Board does come back and is reinvigorated um, in terms of their meeting schedule. I think it's a worthwhile discussion for the two committees to have and come back to the appointing authorities with a recommendation, but. For now, I think we need to help build credibility around the process. Because I can tell you, my vote changed on the four hundred, I'm very vocal about this. Once I actually saw in writing in our public packets what the plan really was. And I thought, wow, this would probably change a lot of other people's opinion too.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Malinowski.
Um, I agree with the concept. I think um, it's extremely important that the public understands what's being put out. Um, so I'm, I'm not as hung up on where it lives, just as long as it. Gets done effectively and it's communicated properly, um, and I think to some of the points that were already raised, it probably makes sense to at least have. Be capital for now and potentially have a conversation with um. Public Works Planning Board down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Haley.
Um, one, I, I first, uh, a question or two for you, Jason, then a question or two for you, Karen, and then some thoughts. Jason, you said you, your, your, your vote changed from what to what? I'm curious.
So I originally was in favor of no road maintenance money this year, um, not because I don't think we, we need it. But because I didn't understand what we were going to use it for. And just didn't want to just appropriate something that we had no plan for. And um, you know, with all due respect to Karen, she has a lot on her plate. Right? And why are we appropriating something we're not going to spend um, right away potentially? And you know, capital planning has certainly floated the idea of doing a much bigger project, you know. Um, related to roads in uh, like a one-time bond, like authorize. X number of million dollars, right? And I think that's something we want to continue to discuss, to get caught up, right? And you could spread that cost if you bond it over a longer period of time, and we think that that, that conversation is right. Um, not for now, um, because we need to let Karen continue to have enough money to do another road maintenance contract this summer. But once we fi- figure out where our plans in terms of if they're going to appropriate anything to roads and sidewalks. And how that fits into everything else Karen has on the list of deferred maintenance.
Okay, so, so if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but once you saw the detail that. Existed for how the money was going to be spent, you were fine.
Totally fine.
Okay, so Karen, now to you. So the detail as to how you're going to spend the money exists.
Yes.
Okay, so, um. I guess, you know, the little guy sitting over my, what is that, my left shoulder? And that's my right shoulder, left shoulder here. That's Alexander Hamilton, and I was just, it's, it's funny, I was just. I, I, I don't think that, I guess the, Alexander and I don't think that capital planning is the right board for this. Um, I, I just think that in one, I, I actually think it's a problem with, with, with. S- some stuff that's going on with, with South Road Boards, Committees, et cetera, generally, and that is, we are. We're not staying within our guardrails, and I, I think capital planning and, and I, I think comments I've made will bear this out. I think you folks have done an incredible job. I just think that this blurs your responsibility. If, if you have responsibility for having a hearing on, on. The, the detail that already exists and explaining that to the public. I just don't think that's your function. Uh, if people disagree, that's fine, but again, I just, you know, it, it's kind of weird, but, but. You know, separation of powers, even in a little place like South Row, is important. Because otherwise, there aren't, in, in the same way for transparency for how a decision is being made. Transparency is, is, who's got responsibility for the decision? I actually think the responsibility for this decision is with the Board of Selectment. And I think the responsibility for having Karen come in, quite frankly, as she does. I mean, we don't make these determinations without seeing this detail. How, and, and we've got the ability to ask for whatever level of granularity we want. It just strikes me that, that the ultimate decision maker. In terms of, you know, signing off on the, the, um, the, the proposal is the Board of Selectment and therefore. The board that should have the responsibility, and I think it's a good idea to, to lay it out in as much detail and bring Karen's detail. Forward, you know, as broadly as possible, but I just think that the responsibility should with the book, should be with the Board of Selectmen, the ultimate decision maker. Otherwise, it blurs. Capital planning makes what a decision that it then recommends to the Board of Selectmen, there were, there might be some sort of. I, I just don't think that's, I don't think that's your function, quite frankly, Jason, and I think it is our function. So that's my view. I don't think you guys should be involved other than what you're currently doing, which is. Deciding that, that from a capital standpoint, this is the amount of money that, 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 that based on the granularity and the. Presentation made to you, that makes sense for you to recommend as a, as an overall number. And then in terms of, 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 of educating transparency, whatever you want to say, that that responsibility. Resides with the ultimate decision maker in this area, which is, which is the Board of Selectmen. That's my view and his view.
It's just me, or can anyone not see what's over Marty's shoulder?
Yeah, he, he's hiding back there, I think.
Oh, yeah, there you go, because you were in front of it, but um, so um. Marty, look, capital planning does not want another thing to do. Um, we were just offering a public forum um, to allow Karen to vet some things in advance of coming. You ultimately have to approve chapter ninety money, that's not what we're talking about here. And um, you need to appropriate um, any, or approve any bids that go out for public bids. So the question is, are you going to take that off of a consent agenda and move it up to a scheduled appointment? Um, for road maintenance money, because you haven't, that hasn't been the function of the board before, so if you want that. By all means, um, we still are going to have to understand the plan though. Which is capital planning committee, we're going to have to understand the plan so that we can inform a number, so. Unfortunately for Karen, she's still going to have to do it. Um, and I also think, uh, again. I'm fine if anyone else wants to take this on advisory, public or planning board, select board. Um, I also think you should talk about it with, with advisory, when, when you meet with them next week of. You know, do they have any recommendations? Because they have asked us a lot of questions about this as well, and candidly, we're still a pretty young committee. We're, are almost at our two-year anniversary.
And, and again, Jason, if, if, if you all wanted, want, and, and you did, you had Karen in and, and. From, for your mandate, satisfied yourselves that the number was appropriate, and that's what should happen. Um, and, and you're right, the, the, the detail has always existed, it's been handled in a consent agenda. The, the recommendation that it be done differently, I think makes perfect sense. Um, but again, I think it should reside with the Board of Select, with, with the Select Board. Um, just again, because, because otherwise lines are blurring about. Who's got the direct oversight responsibility for DPW, who's the decision maker, et cetera, and I just think it's a bad thing when those sort of lines get blurred.
Go ahead, Sam.
Quick follow-up, I get, Marty, I hear you, but I think per Andrew's comment, I think we're in sort of a transition time here. I think the Public Works Planning Board needs to step up and be much more involved with these kinds of things, which they've not done, at least since I've been on it. And I think there's opportunity there, and I think that for the near term, I believe that uh, we're well-served by having the, the capital planning committee. Do this, this time around, and then sort out longer term, and ultimately, it still resides with the Board of Selectment, with the Select Board. And um, um, I'm again confident, as we do in other areas, rely to rely on other boards to make recommendations and. And look at in detail at the plans for things and bring that to us with a recommendation, so I'm, I'm comfortable again with the. Capital planning doing it for this year the way Jason has proposed.
Andrew.
Yeah, I, I, I still believe that, um, I, I basically agree with Sam, that for this year, capital planning committee. Marty, I'm not, I don't really disagree with much of you said, except the capital planning committee is, is, we are their appointing authority, so. So that, that's where I'm at. For this year, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, I'm okay with. Having something put in the um, warrant along the lines of what Jason suggested, I think you'd say your next step is you'd work with Mark that would. Spell out exactly the, the language, and that would appear in the next draft of the warrant.
Okay. Sorry, Andrew, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Malinowski.
Karen, are we anticipating um, utilizing the four hundred thousand in the ne-? In, in total in the next bid that goes out?
I didn't take any of my papers related to the um, to that, I, I think what um. And Jason, you might be able to help me with this, um. What I had shown at the bottom in that list that I had of streets. I'm basically planning on trying to bid some of those, enough of those to work all of it in and keep. Only just keep a very minimum in case the bid is um, a little wonky, right? You gotta keep a little extra, but um. Yes, I mean, my intention would be that, but I don't remember exactly how all my numbers came up.
Yeah, so um, let me just summarize for everyone, um, Karen has more than five million dollars of. Um, potential road projects, like unknown needs, a good chunk of that is Corderville Road from the um. Basically, the Route Nine interchange all the way down to the MBTA um, station, that's a good chunk, that's over sixty percent of it, based on the details she gave us. The most important thing is we have one point one million dollars in the bank right now. For Karen to go out on a bid contract on roads. That's just south though of where we want to be, so if you add the four hundred. In, you've got a, a decent sized project to go bid to get some economies of scale. We've also linked Karen in the schools up, schools are paving some of their parking lots this year, that will again. Hopefully create some more economies of scale for someone that just wants to do this work, um, and give us a better bid, so. Um, that four hundred likely is going to go to very good use, but obviously also agree with Karen, she needs to leave something. Back just to help with one-off items that are unexpected.
And just to be clear on a couple of other things too, um, when we do our bid. The bid does have the list of streets and exactly what we're planning on doing. So. That's public record that goes out to bid, that's what is awarded. Um. Also, we always, if the, the schools, and we always do work fairly close together when they have something that they do want to do. We generally will put it into our contract and it's just, we work out. So Woodward, that whole new parking lot we did for them in our contract. Um, a lot, will, a lot of times have the engineer do the work and then they pay the work or however. We always come up with a good way of working together. The other, um, the other thing that's kind of important is that. I know you're trying to figure out, because we had talked to Capital about having a list. This is just road maintenance. It's not anything special, right? It's just you're paving the roads. There's not a lot to talk about. There's not a lot of detail. It's something that is easy to talk about at Capital, which is a well-visited and reviewed. Committee Advisory is also that way, and Selectmen are that way. I've tried to use Public Works Planning Board before, um, for projects. And I sent out letters to people to tell them what's happening. We did it for Main Street several times. We had a bunch of meetings. And no one came and you would have thought, and, and I mean, this is back, I know. Sam, it doesn't seem like it's been an active committee recently, but it used to always come, we, when we had something. So we'd have an issue and we would, we would want to explore. We'd. No one would ever come to the meetings. We, I remember, I mean, everyone knows Main Street. It was like, everyone was like, what's Main Street? We've been talking about it for years at Public Works Planning Board. Um, also, um, Cordova Road, we've already had a meeting through Public Works Planning Board, but that's because it's much more detailed. And you need to talk to people specifically about it. What I do is I send them letters. I send them what's happening in front of their house and I ask them to come. That's what I did on Newton Street. And that's what we did at, um, Deerfoot and Flag Intersection. Doesn't necessarily need to be the full public. It's the people who live right there, who have specific questions. They, they need, they need to get a letter to come and talk to me, but to come to a meeting with Public Works Planning Board and vet it. And if you're anybody, you just want to know about it, that's, that's fine. But people don't tend to follow that committee. Um, the committee used to be made up of contractors and people who had experience with Public Works' work. It got away from that. We have a couple of people on now who do work at least in the industry, but, um. It really hasn't, you know, we had engineers, we had, and it, it turned into not being that. And not actually being a committee that, um, you know, we, we haven't had. It's never been a diverse, a diverse group where there's people with young children and retirees. And it's not, it's, um. It's always a good group of people who try to work together and try to come up with something, but, um. It's, it's a lot different because it's not a, a highly visited, even if they meant monthly, which I know is a recommendation. We don't have something to talk about every month. Right? I, if, if, if we're not doing a project, they're not weighing in on the day-to-day work of the public works. It's not, they're supposed to be advising the selectmen. That's actually the charge is to advise the selectmen on public works matters. And if they, if they had a, an incentive of their own, they wanted to look at, oh, we'd like to look at this. They, they can look at anything they want. Um, but also that's something that the selectmen can direct to have looked at like, you know, by them. But it's not, um, it's just, it's not the way the committee has generally worked. It's usually on an issue basis. Okay, let's meet. We're going to talk about Cordova Road. We're going to talk about the, um, the water tank that went through that committee. A ton, right? Mass Water Master Plan, the last one. A lot of that stuff, it does get reviewed. It's not that the, um. It's not that the committee never meets, it's that they meet when there's something to talk about at depth and in detail. So to defend the committee, they're not, there, there's nothing, they're not a bad committee. But to do something like this, it's, it, I mean, to, to go and look at a list of streets that are just going to be paved. It, there's, there's no detail to it. There's nothing to it. Okay, pave those streets. You, where you're going to give me 10 other ones that you think are better? And then I'm going to go and someone else can give me 10 other ones. Like, that's not something we generally. Vet through, except to say, here's the list. This is what we think. We have these other ones we know still need to be done. And that should be done at a meeting, I think. That's a lot more, a lot more well-visited and rounded. And not specifically people who are looking to try to create a problem. All right, Chelsea did that answer.
I'm good. I, I would be in favor of tying it with, um, Capital Planning for this year.
For this year, okay. And, and I would as well, just specifically for this year. I think we need to come up with. You know, a, a, a better path. And I, I, I think it's, it's a good discussion with Advisory as well, Andrew. And I think Public Planning Works. Public Works Planning Board, as you said, um, seems to be an avenue that we should be also pursuing, though it doesn't necessarily fall under us. They advise us. But I also agree, Marty, ultimately, it's our decision. So I agree with that as well. So, um. Any final thoughts, Marty? The guy over your shoulder didn't help you on this one.
Uh, he and I are fine.
Okay, all right. So, um, I don't know, Mark, do we need to actually take a vote on this or? I, I think it's pretty clear that working with Jason to craft this for this year is the path that we choose.
I mean, the intention is going to be, you know, um, and having had Capital vet all of the capital items and everything, it only makes sense to work with. Um, with, um, Mr. Melonowski or one of the other designees from the committee. To, you know, to put together the summaries and just kind of give a broad brush of what each item is. And, and if there's any. You know, um, mitigating circumstances, as we discussed tonight, that need to be mentioned, just so town meeting's aware of, of what's going on with each of the items.
Okay, so votes not necessarily required. The path is clear. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, so Karen. I think that's it for you for tonight. Thank you for, uh, for coming, for giving us a lot of information. And hopefully, we're finding a, a, a path forward for you as well. But as always, we appreciate it. Thank you. Jason, we're going to have you hang around. We're going to bring over, um, for our next discussion, um, of the proposed senior center expansion. Um, if we could bring over John Parent and, um. Mr. Harrington, is Pam here? Pam as well. Um. Chelsea, I believe it was you that asked for everybody to. To, um, come in to kind of talk a little bit about the project. Um. I don't know necessarily that we need a presentation. I'm sure everybody's pretty familiar with this. Um, but certainly if any member of the board would, would like further presentation, we could certainly do it. Uh, my intent was to start off with, um, Jason. We'll go to John. If there's any specific questions for Bill or Pam. Um, you know, we can certainly go there. Um, and then I wanted to share, uh, a conversation at the end. That I had with the, uh, Chair of the ARPA Committee as well today. So Jason, why don't we start with you? We'll go to John. And, uh, we'll start there.
Thanks. Um, so I just wanted, uh, obviously, Capital Planning has a posted meeting for tonight, but there's only two members here, so we do not have. A quorum, but I thought it was important, um, when we were invited to this conversation to, to lay the groundwork of. What we have heard is capital planning, uh, for many years, i.e. the two that we've been in existence, but also the capital plan that we inherited. Um, from the town finance team when we came into existence. And one thing that has remained consistent across. All discussions of capital planning, even as we've had members change in and out, has been that this project that you are going to be discussing. Is, if not the most deferred, one of the most deferred, uh, capital items that has been in the plan. I think you all know the story that John and, uh, Bill and team can go into great extent about the use of ACABET. Uh, we did discuss as a capital planning committee, um, the use of a third-party contractor when it came to our attention that. Um, the cost may be in the range of what we had always been caring for ACABET to do the work. Um, the committee was very intrigued, um, by that. Um, naturally, there was some initial hesitation, given that capital planning. Um, is the, um, primary driver, uh, behind the Woodward, uh, discussions as well and thinking about a broader plan. But I think it's really important for everyone to realize that even though you took. A huge step earlier in your meeting by officially forming your NAREY Building Committee and getting that membership up and running. That is five to eight years away from being anything of a, um, finished product. So, well, it's not Capital Planning's job or role, in our opinion, to pitch a project. Our job is to inform a project. And the information we want you to leave here with. Before I, you know, leave the details to Bill and or John, is one, it's been out there forever. Two, um, the number that we are carrying in the capital plan for next year for appropriation is $325,000. We were, we, um, did actually vote on a $350,000 number. I know the amount that's going to be discussed tonight is a $400,000 number. I would say this is a very unique opportunity, um, with ARPA. That our position is that if you are going to do something to Cordova Hall. Now, this summer is the time. That is where Capital Planning's position is. Because that is going to maximize the return on investment that the town would see by any capital expenditure. Um, I do want to come back to what amount, um, at the end, um. Because I think you do have some, some flexibility if you are going to move forward, um, now or, you know, after the ARPA Committee goes through their. Their work. Um, but I think, you know, that's where capital planning is, is that this is. Really a project that has to be considered now. And every year you put it off from here on out, really jeopardizes it happening at all. Given kind of the broader plan, um, that's in the works. So I'll pause and certainly cede the floor to any others that want to speak to it.
All right, well, we'll come around for questions from the board. But John, why don't you, um, give us a, a little bit of an update of, of where things stand for you? And, and, um, how moving this forward potentially, um, would affect you as well, as far as bids and whatnot? Sorry, John, you're muted.
Um, as many of you may recall, um, elevation plans on the building were done a few years back. As you can see behind Bill, actually in his background, there's the addition right behind his left ear. Bill, scoot to your right. Go to your right, to the other right.
Yeah, right. Over my shoulder.
There's the new rum. Basically, a good reason to do it this year as well is, let's face it. Cordova Hall has been closed to the public since the pandemic started. There is a need now for people to get back out and get back into the mainstream action of things. And Cordova Hall is the place a lot of seniors go. And we've noticed in the building lately, a lot, people are coming back to re-acclimate. It, it left a big void these last few years for people. And to give them this at this point seems just like the right time. And with the ARPA funds lining up. All the stars seem to be aligning for this in the proper fashion. Um, to Jason's point. We had, um, originally requested 325 with an ACABET number. Looking at numbers from the architect who did the original elevation drawings, we feel we can do the project for 350. Now, taking into consideration geo-global issues right now and regular inflation this country's dealing with. We are asking for 400. We need a cushion on this one, because there is no backdrop to come to. If, if we fall short. We can't really go to Capital. We can't go to Advisory. You know, this is an ARPA project. The goal would be to get some money approved for engineering and architecture. Move forward, get that person on board. That would take a couple of months to draw up the actual construction plans. Get this thing out to bid and get it underway this summer. Ideally, once, once the, the shovels hit the dirt, this thing, thing should be done in three months. So total time within six months from approval, start to finish, basically. That is the goal. And also this year, we have Capitals, um, been working with us. We have some money put in for my crew to paint the exterior of Cordova Hall this year as well. So it all kinds of ties in. If we could get the rum done, we could paint the building at, at the same time around it. Let's finish up the outside, make it all purty, as it say. Um, and that would be the goal. So I think timing-wise, this is the right thing. Need-wise, it's definitely the right thing right now. Because there is a void right now. You can feel the void down there. Um. I'm sure Pam would attest, things are coming back to normal, but things are not back to normal yet. There's going to be an adjustment phase. And I think this would go a long way into boosting the spirits of the seniors right now, too. And that's an important thing. It'd also give them some space that they kind of need for classes and stuff in the, in the activities portion of it. So, uh, it's a good project.
Okay, John, thank you. Just want to share with the board as well. I had a conversation with the Chair of the ARPA Committee. Um, one of the requests she had made is, you know, we've asked them to do a process. And they would ask that we allow them to finish the process. So I, I had a brief conversation, uh, with John today. Um, and, and with Mr. Purple as well. So, uh, what I would suggest, if the board is willing to move this project forward. Is to see if we can find within the budget $20,000, which is what the architect fee would be. We could always backstop it with ARPA if we can't find anything. But, um, you can put this out to bid without having the ARPA funds necessarily in place. That would allow the ARPA Committee to continue the job that we've asked them to do. They're well-aware that we want. You know, the board was, is some level of willing to, to fast-track this from next year to this year, but they have just asked that we allow them to do. Um, the process that we've asked them to do, because as the Chair said, she. As a member of ARPA, wouldn't support this today because it didn't go through the vetting that they're trying to do. So I think we have, have options, if the board is willing to, to move this forward. Is to first allow John $20,000, whether it be through looking to see if we can find it in a budget or approving it through ARPA now. And allowing it to go out to bid, which also allows us to have a firmer number. Um, as well. ARPA needs to have. I think it's the end of, end of May is when ARPA completes their work. They're, they're doing surveys now. And also during that time, certainly all the seniors in town can fill out the survey and, and, you know, uh, make ARPA aware of the need. So I, I guess, so it's twofold. Um, is the board willing to first take a look at doing this? This year, potentially with ARPA? I guess that's my first question to the board. Um, I'm not seeing anybody that's shaking their head. No, Marty, are you willing to explore moving this forward now?
Oh, oh, that, that doesn't mean no. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this fits comfortably into the, the. The view I had of how ARPA should play out. So, yes.
Okay, so we're on path with that. So what, so the second piece I would ask, and again. Bill, I don't think you really need to say anything yet at this point. So, um, we'll, we'll certainly come back to you, though. But is the board willing to have Mark take a look at where potentially. Within current budgets, we can find the $20,000 that's required for the architect. But if not, if it can't be found, um, we would backstop it with ARPA. Okay. Yes, I'm staying fine with that. And then that would also allow, once that's done. Allowing it to go out to bid, we would be obviously awarding any bids. And it would also allow. Uh, Jason, I'll come to you in just two seconds. Um, that would allow the ARPA Committee to finish the due diligence that they need to do. I'm, okay, Jason, I'll come to you next. Let me go to Marty first. Go ahead.
Yeah, Lisa, I'm fine with all of that. The, the, the one thing that I would communicate to, um, the ARPA Committee. Is that, and, and maybe, maybe their plan is to ha, is to just have a final product. But if they make a determination that this is, this is something that they would certainly recommend, I, I would just ask that they not be wedded to the end of May.
Okay.
Um, and they, if they can make that determination earlier, then make it earlier.
Okay, I think that their, their, their goal, Marty, was is to get, get the survey done. See where it comes back with the public. And again, I think that's a great opportunity for our seniors to. Make sure that your voice gets heard through the survey from ARPA as well. Um, so, okay, Jason, go ahead.
Um, Lisa, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do there. Um, and you're obviously trying to thread a very delicate needle, um, with that proposition. Um, this is a personal opinion, and I think it goes against how we vet all capital items in town. I think with that plan, you're now appropriating general fund taxes that we all pay that could, would otherwise have been going to free cash. Um, to fund an engineering study that was not, um. Boded on at town meeting. And I think you're setting a dangerous precedent for other capital projects in that manner. So I think. Um, my personal opinion, just hearing that, because I'd have to look at the exact wording for capital policy too. Is, you know, we do look at funding and make a recommendation around funding. And, um, I think if you're looking to get the engineering underway. It may be a compromise to appropriate the engineering out of ARPA now. As opposed to appropriating a general fund that you told the taxpayers in a different budget existed. Um, the only other way I could see you doing it with, following within the four corners is reserve fund. Um, and as a prior advisory member, there's obviously, um, very different, uh, views on what a reserve fund really is for. And I think you all know it's under, um, it's had a rough year, um, so far in terms of what they've already had to approve. So. I just wanted to raise that um just from a pure overall capital perspective in terms of trying to thread this needle so delicately.
Well, well taken, Jason. Um, again, trying to think outside of the box how we could move this along. Um. Thoughts on the board? I don't disagree. And maybe we just make the decision instead of just backstopping it from ARPA that we just do it and be done. Because we, that's within our authority to do.
So we could take twenty grand out without much pain on the part of the ARPA Committee. I'm very interested to see what they come up with, but I think it's important to keep this on track.
Okay, Andrew?
That sounds sensible to me.
Marty?
That's fine. I I think, given the the twenty eighteen town meeting vote that that I I disagree with Jason. But I'm fine taking it out of ARPA.
Okay, Chelsea?
Yep.
Okay, so there we go. Mike, we've just made it easier. We've taken a step away from you. So uh you guys can can certainly move forward. Let's take in a this official vote. Um, do I have a motion to fund the architect for the proposed senior center expansion out of the ARPA monies?
For twenty grand.
Twenty grand. Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it.
So move.
Second?
Is it? Okay, roll call, Mr. Dunnington.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cyrus?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Malinowski, did I say you already, Chelsea?
You did.
I went I went out of order on my.
Aye, two, two votes.
Thank you, thank you. And and bracio, aye. Okay. So we're good with that. So, Bill, you didn't have to say a word. Uh, we're we're moving ahead.
I would like to say a word.
Well, you are certainly welcome to.
Thank you. I got, I gotta say, I really appreciate the support that you guys have given us. For this project. We've been, as you all know, we've been working on this for over two years. We've had highs and lows, and uh this is now one of the highs, I guess. Uh, and just to reiterate, the the seniors of this town have been more isolated than most of the people with this COVID. And to have this room, which we really need where the seniors can come in and just sit down and chat with each other and. Read a paper, watch the TV, th- this would be a great uh thing that that helps them get back on their feet. And gets back and they get their social life and get out of their houses. Um. I I just can't say enough how much uh myself and the whole uh Council on Aging appreciates the. The support that you guys are giving us tonight.
All right, thank you, Bill, and thank you, guys, for coming out. We greatly appreciate it. Thanks for hanging around.
One more big thank you to John, who's really been on on our side through all this and really done a. A lot of help to make this thing move forward. Appreciate it, John, very much.
Awesome. Bill, thank you so much. Pam, do you want to say something?
I just want to thank everybody. Uh, appreciate the support and um. We're going to be busier than ever. We can just feel it in the air. Um. The people are just really happy to get out of the house and everything's filling up. We have waiting lists and it's rolling. So, thank you. That's gonna, it's gonna be, this is gonna, this is gonna mean a lot to a lot of people. So, thank you.
Um, one other thing I'll add is, uh Joyce had put into, uh she wondered where the survey was. Pam. We'll send you the link if you want to use your email resources, you know, to to get it out. I know it's been publicized on. On myself, bro. I think uh it's even on the town website. I want to say it's southborough.org, but I'm not. Don't quote me on that, but we'll get you a link um to the surveys, because the town survey is also there as well.
Thank you again.
All right, folks, thank you so much. Anything else? Good night, everybody.
Night.
Night.
All right, uh, warrant article discussions. This was based on the three seven draft. Uh, can we bring Mr. Davis over? Recreation revolving fund. Ms. Malinowski, I believe that you requested them to come in for this one?
Um, I did, and um the main reason was um because. Rec is doing so well with their programming that they um they're requesting to increase their revolving. Um, account expense line item, which is in um. In the revolving account warrant article. Um. It's Article twenty-one, I believe. So right now, Tim, you can be honest here. It's four hundred thousand and. Um, recreation is requesting five hundred thousand?
As a spending cap, correct?
Yes, um, and we're definitely, and I know this was in our Q two review. Um, the rec revolving account detail, but we're definitely, well, I think we'll be okay for for this fiscal year. Um, but I think we're getting close to bumping up against that as Tim um and team have been increasing. Their um programs um and have been pretty successful um with selling out of. If not all, most of of the sessions for kind of everything across the board. Um, so, Tim, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that.
Yeah, it's just that, I mean, this is a direct reflection of, I think. Joe, our programmer, and I think the momentum that we've been picking up over the last, you know, two, three, four years when it comes to programming. As, you know, Ms. Malinowski just mentioned, our our summer is one hundred percent sold out already. Um, seven weeks of summer camp, we sold out in thirty-six hours. It was mind-boggling. And then um. You know, we we've had a couple of other summer programs around our sports um companies that have always come in. Those have sold out. We've expanded, we've added extra weeks, um and we're we're continuing to add programs week by week and and as the seasons go. So this is just a a reflection of. You know, anytime I've I've had to come in front of any selectmen, any town requests this, it's just a sign we're doing well. So, you know, um. And just with purchases coming down the line with, you know, expansion of community events as well, movies, concerts, summer nights, Heritage Day, the Halloween event. Um, the more we're doing, the more it costs and it's um, it's just a reflection on on my team and and what we're doing. So. We'd appreciate support of of giving us a little more more cushion, so we can keep doing what we're doing.
All right, any questions, comments? For Tim, go ahead, Chelsea.
So I have, so I have a question. I'm probably going to sound like a broken record, because I think I ask this every time rec comes before us, but this kind of is a good segue. Um, so, given your success, um and hopefully expansion of more programs and more profit, um. Or is it feasible to add your program coordinator into the revolving account, given that's his primary role?
You know, I'll never be in favor of it, but I will say if we continue this down the path we're going and the numbers hold, then I think it is. Definitely in the conversation now, um that we're seeing the success that we were hoping for. Everything's paying off. So I think it's a conversation that could be had in another fiscal year, for sure.
So what about this fiscal year?
Uh, the the only hesitation I have is, yes, we're doing well, but we also lost, you know. Two to three sessions of after-school programs as we were coming out of COVID. Um, so I would be more inclined to make a more solid recommendation on it, knowing that we are. Having the program output that we're having, but over the span of five solid sessions. Um, because, you know, after school is what really drives it. Yes, we do, you know, we make a chunk over the summer. Um, but after school is really where the bread and butter is. Um, so if we can see and be be confident. Um, with our revamped schedule and our revamped programs that they hold, especially in the fall. And then obviously, we saw success this spring. I think I would be more more comfortable waiting off till till the next budget cycle to discuss that. Or make a, make a more confident recommendation, but.
So as a compromise, would you flip your part-time person into the operating budget and your full-timer into the revolving account?
Yeah, as a compromise, I I, you know, it's, yeah, it it's small potatoes, I think, comparison. Um, but it would alleviate some strain.
Okay, that would be great if we could do that for this fiscal year. Thank you.
Any, uh, go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, um, Tim, I I mean, it's it, it's it's good news, bad news. I mean, the good news is you sold out in thirty-six hours. The bad news is. Presumably, if you needed, you know, wanted to put together a waiting list, and maybe you do, I mean, there are, there are. You know, and I would have been in this category of missing the, of not being in those those first thirty-six hours. I mean, there are some kids who were going to miss out. Is it a, is the, is the cap a function of of um. Uh, space? Is it a function of personnel? Is it a combination? And is there something you, we should be thinking about so that, you know, next summer that the capacity is more? And so, you know, it takes forty-eight hours instead of thirty-six hours to sell out?
It it's a, it's a little mixture of both. I mean, right, so we stick within ratios um as a licensed camp. So we set our ratios and our limit of. So, talking summer specifically, um, based on the staff that we have. So we we base it on the staff that we had last year. Um, that number dictates how many kids we can take. I will say, as we're going through the process, we're we're actively hiring now. Uh, we just opened a whole slew of seats because we felt comfortable with it, and we're going to continue doing that. If we can, because, yes, we have wait lists. Our wait lists are thirty-plus deep every single week. Um, so so the demand is there. So if it comes down to personnel, it comes down to staff. If we are confident and comfortable with the number. We'll take them. You know, our camp is primarily outside, um so space isn't necessarily an issue. The schools are very generous if it rains and giving us the space inside. So space, so it's more personnel um and staying within the limits of our license for camp um comfortably than it is space. Physical space.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Sam. Question for you. Um, do you restrict these programs to software residents only, or do we have people outside of software who?
No, we 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 do open them um to non-residents. Um, the numbers that we we just pulled them actually last week, just to see. We're about ten percent non-resident. Um, and if I'm being frank, a lot of the non-residents are are staff of the town um who work in town. So. Um, it is overwhelmingly um residents of our programs.
I was wondering if there's opportunity for pricing differential for, if we had programs that, you know, you fill out mostly with. The people who aren't residents to bump the prices up for that to generate more revenue. For space, we can't sell to to local residents who I think ought to get preferential pricing.
Yeah, we've, we've, we're, we've actually had that conversation, especially after this season. Um, if I think if we see our our percentages grow dramatically to non-resident. I think it would become more more of a a serious conversation to have, but it is something we're aware of.
But for ten percent and mostly uh town staff, um, doesn't sound like that's worth it. So, thanks.
Right now.
Mr. Dunnington, anything?
Uh, nope, although I definitely am very aware of the um. Selling out in only thirty, something twenty-four hours. So, um, yeah, there's some good sides and some very negative sides to that. So. Um, but I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Sorry. I think as far as this item goes, that's great. So, Tim, you're gonna, um, just to be clear, based on Ms. Malinowski's comments, just so the board is clear, you're gonna flip the. Part-timer back in the. Operating budget and no?
No, I wouldn't want to, without, I wouldn't want to do that without my commission's blessing in discussing it with them first. So, I think that's a separate conversation.
So for a compromise, you're going to take it back to recreation?
What's the question here?
Well, no, no, no. So there was a compromise, I thought, uh, between you and Chelsea that um you would flip the. Chelsea, correct me if I'm wrong, the part-time person into the operating budget and your coordinator into the. Revolving fund. I thought that was, and again, Chelsea is.
That's a potential. I'm not, I'm not willing to s- submit to that right now, because I don't want to make that. Decision with no discussion at all with my commission, as this was just presented now. Um, I think it's a compromise to consider, but I I wouldn't want to. Commit to anything tonight regarding anything budgetarily wise with salaries.
Okay, so, Sam, you think it was the other way?
Whatever the least expensive one was, I can't, I'm not sure if that's the right one.
The least expensive is in the revolving account now.
Okay.
So my suggestion is the program coordinator does all the work for what's going into the revolving account.
Wow, okay, I didn't understand, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. All right. So, Tim, you're going to take that back and and uh when is recreation meeting next?
Uh, April, well, the week before break, we ju- we just had a meeting. I was just on when I jumped over here. Uh, early April, so I can get that.
Okay. And and I think my, you know, having, having gone through signing up for programs, et cetera, I fall into. The percentage that got bumped out by the ten percent. So I think, you know, if we're gonna, if we're going to have taxpayer dollars. Pay for rec staff, then I think we need to give some priority to residents before we open it up to non-residents. Um, unless we're gonna be partially self-funded and, you know, so that's kind of where I'm coming from on this is. Is that other towns are benefiting from our tax dollars. And you're you're doing well, and I think it's, you know, encouraging that you have so many. Sellout programs. I mean, obviously, they're popular. People are looking for for that. It'd be nice if we, you know, when we sell out of a session of something. If we have, you know, and I'm not talking about necessarily about camp, but any other programs, you know, you have a list of twenty on a waitlist. Can we add another session? You know, and I, I know there's facility, you know, components to that, but I just think. I think it's unfortunate that not everybody's getting to utilize the rec. Department programs because they sell out so fast. Not necessarily a bad thing, but.
Like Marty said, it's double-edged, so.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, I think we're good there for now. Um, Tim, I know you came for the the. Uh, Mooney Pickleball Court, um, but I had a pleasant conversation that said that that's a CPC article, so it's CPC. That should come and talk to us about it. So I'm going to table that for now. So we will thank you for coming and 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 I will release you. Um, and and we'll make the request of CPC to come and present that article. So, not that I think there's going to be a whole lot of questions about it anyway. Pickleball is pretty uh, pretty popular right now. So, but again, thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
All right, good to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Article twenty-seven. Um, I had mentioned this earlier. Mr. Hagerty has asked that we table. This discussion. He's making some changes based on some feedback he's received. So I I think a good. Time to discuss this is at a joint meeting with advisory. So we can all hear what Mr. Hagerty has to say and. We can move forward at that point. So that brings us up to the noise bylaw. Um, I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity. There was an updated draft. That was put into the packet. I don't believe anyone from the noise bylaw is here. I just want to double check quick.
Tim is here.
Tim is here. Okay, can we bring Tim over? I don't know if Tim was was. Ready to speak to this, but certainly, um. Happy to have.
His hand up, so I'm assuming he's ready to speak.
Perfect, perfect. Hi, Tim, welcome.
Howdy. How are you guys doing tonight?
Good, thank you for coming. Um, I know since you were last here, you guys had done some revisions. You would talk to council. Do, do you want to just touch a little bit on where you guys have fallen at this point on the noise bylaw?
Yeah, I wasn't really prepared to speak, but I'm happy to to jump in. Um, we uh went to, uh, we had council review it. Um, so the draft, you guys see V nine has council's um edits in it. We went to advisory um last week. We had a joint meeting. And we had some input there that we're going to be um contributing to a version ten. That we are go- hoping to have done on Thursday this week. So the version you see is pretty close to where we think we're going to land. And um we have some just minor cleanup, some some um continuity errors, so to speak, to take care of and. Um, just to make sure we have logical language throughout the piece, um as advisory pointed out, a couple of issues to consider.
Great, Tim, thank you. I will tell you, I'm sad to see that hooting is gone. I I appreciated the 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 hooting and hollering. Um, so.
We couldn't define hoot, so we decided that it was best not to, not to have that section pointed out.
All right, well, that brought me great, great laughter and great joy. So I I appreciate that. So uh, we'll open it up if the board has any questions. I know, like you said, there's a. A newer version coming, but if anyone has any questions and comments on this one, um, we'll start with Mr. Dunnington.
Um, is it fair to say that now it it really is, it looks like it's. Mostly, you know, and it's, it's now an hours-based approach mostly, because, for example, one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was the uh. The leaf blower provision, right? So that's now out. It's the, really, the core of it now is it's an hours-based system.
Yeah, that's a pretty fair assumption to make. The only piece in there that still has any kind of legitimacy in a decimal format. Is the informational section at the very end. Um, that is uh where we moved that section to, and it's something that the Board of Health already has purview to enforce. So its inclusion is strictly informational in this, in this nature. Um, but you are correct that our um expectation for simplicity and for um the town's uh folks' ability to read it. Understand it and interpret it is to really keep it simple, keep it with an hours-based approach with real simple um. Uh, items that are allowed and not allowed. So it's, it's easily understood.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Malinowski?
I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
I don't have any questions right now. Thank you. Mister Haley.
No, I'm good as well. It got shorter, so in my view, it got better.
Sorry. Great. Sam?
Uh, I'm okay for now. Interested to see what the next draft has, but I think that they continue to make great progress with this. And, uh, again, it may, there, there'll be people who are not happy with various parts of this, but I think it remains critical to actually get something in front of town meeting that's a reasonable compromise, and I think the committee's done good work to reach that point. So, um, I think we keep going and, and move on to town meeting here. Thanks.
Great. I, I agree with Sam. Tim, please take our thanks once again back to the committee. I know you guys have done a, a ton of work. You know, we, we've all had the opportunity to, to watch the meetings. And, you know, you guys have been on a pretty accelerated schedule. So again, please share our thanks with everybody. We look forward to version ten and hopefully version ten is, is the final version. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is the CPA transfer, uh, fund transfer. That article is going to be pulled from the warrant uh, based on a conversation that was had under the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, tonight in the letter that's being sent. Um, so at this time, Mister Purple, if we could pull that from the warrant, which leads us into budget update. Ms. Malinowski, I'm gonna to turn this over to you, but if you could, uh, address Karen's um, fuel budget article first. Uh, she references the snow budget, so I am going to leave the room until the fire piece is done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and can we bring Mister Ballantyne over, please? So we can deal with the fuel, the fuel memo first. And this, this does relate to the FY twenty-two, kind of giving us a heads up that, um, there may be a request. Hi, Brian. How are you? There may be a quest, a request to, um, do a reserve fund transfer for this year. She, she, but she may be able to cover it in her budget, which, um, leads us to the, um, FY twenty-three budget for fuel. The current budget, and Brian, keep me honest here, does not include a fuel increase based on Karen's original proposal, but it probably should based on kind of the uncertainty right now around fuel. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Um, and this is one of the line items that's included in the snow and ice budget, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So, um, so I guess does anybody have any, um, feedback on that? Or are we okay with, um, Karen revising her budget? Hopefully this week to increase the FY twenty-three. Okay. So Brian, if you can get back to Karen on that.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I, 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 I agree that we should do it because it's not really something which is un- unanticipated that, um, fuel prices are gonna be much, much higher. Just so the, the number that Karen had in her memo was twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that's the overall increase that, so that is gonna, and I guess Brian can speak to this, that's gonna put us up against that five percent with the shift, right? Uh, which had been kind of a target that we had been setting. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just, uh, doing this may have that effect.
It'll put a little closer, yes, but there's some other items that might go the other way in the next few weeks, twos.
Okay.
That, that's less than a tenth of a percent though, I think.
Yeah, it's not gonna cross it, but it'll just put it a little closer.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Um, Mark, can you just ask Lisa to come back, please? Thank you. Okay. And if we can just move on to Brian's, uh, FY twenty-three budget memo. So Brian, Carla, Mark and I spent a couple hours, I don't remember if it was last week or the week before, on some of the, um, how do I say? On some of the budget items, and I just wanted to briefly touch on what we changed, just to make sure that this board was okay with the changes. So the first one was splitting the part-time ZBA person between conservation and ZBA. So ZBA is kind of in a slower period right now. Um, and Conservation Department needs some admin help. So, um, they, they will be shared, that, those two departments will be sharing the current part-time ZBA person. So what Brian did was, um, split out twelve and five and a half, I think, Brian, between, or twelve and seven and a half maybe between, um, okay, Concom and ZBA. So those hours are actually reflected in the actual budget. So that's why you see ZBA going down and Concom going slightly down, um, from the original request that included the full, full part-time.
And Chelsea, that's twelve for Z, for Concom and not seven and a half for ZBA.
Yeah.
And, and when is Concom moving to the cortical hall? Is that soon? So they'll, they'll be physically there together, which makes.
Within two weeks, I believe.
Um, and so that essentially took that new request out of this budget. So that's, so overall the budget reduced, but that's why you see, um, Concom still up because we moved hours over. So thank you to Lori for, um, kind of switching that, um, and be willing to work with us on that. Um, okay. The last meeting we had, um, at the time, we had a request for the fire budget to increase fifty-five hundred. Um, I think it really came in at less than twelve hundred, Brian, between, um, and it was really, okay, and it was really due to lieutenant contact. We were, are the new lieutenant. So we were good on the fire chief piece. Historical, reduce their budget, um, for the minutes. And then there were some other minutes moving that we can probably talk about when we get to the individual budgets. And then the police, um, the tasers were still in there, but we're using Harvard funds for this year, so they were still a line-up in the operating budget. So we ended up taking that ten thousand dollar out. Um, Board of Health, we removed that fifty thousand from the operating budget, so that also reduced it. And Brian, I, I wasn't involved in this conversation, so I'll let Brian speak to the thirty thousand. But two other things that we did was, um, there was an error in the building budget that included, um, an increase that shouldn't have been in there. So that was reduced. That was a couple thousand dollars. And then when we were looking at the revenue for meals tax, we had forty thousand in there, which is what we had in there for FY twenty-two. So we doubled it for FY twenty-three. And we think that's a solid number. It could be more, but we feel comfortable that that is really, it's achievable for FY twenty-three based on what we know from FY twenty-two, although we don't have January and February um, actuals yet. Um, and Brian, is that because it's paid quarterly to us? Okay. So we should, we should know after March, when we get the payment, what the first quarter of the meals tax was, because we did that on January first. Um, and then obviously, the, um, CBAs are not baked into this yet. But I just wanted to make sure if anybody had an issue kind of with those movements, um, that you can, I may for, um, moving them.
They're mostly positive.
Yeah. And then Brian, I'll let you talk about the ambulance revenue because I wasn't involved.
Yeah, we just got another, uh, month of ambulance collections. It's clear that, uh, the trend the entire year has been over last year, uh, by quite a bit. So, uh, you saw that in the quarterly report, but it's continuing to stay strong. So we're confident um, that we can put at least half that truck, that fire truck cost, that thirty thousand towards the ambulance. And we may by town meeting be able to commit full amount. So I just want to get another month or two under our belt and see if it's gonna make the, uh, if it's gonna make the goal.
Question about that? Brian, did I ask a question? Is, is that a result of volume? Or have prices gone up or has our collection percentage for the billings for that increased or some combination of that?
It's, it's volume based, Sam. Uh, uh, volume based, yes.
I guess that's good news and bad news.
Yep. Yes, you're right.
So Sam, we increased rates, I think July first of twenty nineteen.
Right, I remember.
And then the pandemic hit and the volume went down. So I think this is, now we're, we're seeing the increase because the volume's up and we hadn't really seen the pickup from increasing the rates.
And as I recall, we had a pretty good collection rate, not, not a hundred percent, but pretty good. So, um, not much.
It was in the nineties.
Outside there, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would just add, thank you, Brian and Chelsea. I think, you know, uh, we're, we're getting to where we were hoping that we could be. You know, we still have a little bit of time as well. So, um, I, I just have one question, Brian. So in this two point six four from the ARPA funds, the fifty-nine thousand for Breakneck Hill, the, I assume that's included in here. The fifty thousand for, uh, Board of Health, obviously you said that was taken out as well. So tho- those numbers are included. The ninety-five thousand that we didn't necessarily agree on, that's not taken. Included in, it's taken out?
It's not included. You're correct.
Perfect. Okay. Cause we didn't, we didn't take a position on that. Okay. Thank you.
And fifty for ADA.
Yes, five for ADA. I, I'm sorry. Five for the, uh, yes, never forget that.
Any questions for Brian or Chelsea? I think this, this, this piece was the simple piece. Um, okay. Brian, thank you. Thank you for hanging around. We, as always, appreciate it. All right. That takes us to Chairman's Report. Uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that three additional citizens petitions were certified and have been added to the warrant. A, the warrant is available in draft form, um, on, um, in this packet. And Mark, can we get it in draft form up somewhere, um, on the town website as well?
Yeah, I'll have that posted up tomorrow, but again, we're making changes now almost daily to it. So.
I know, but it just based on.
The dates right on it.
No, just based on as of, as of what was in our packet today at least.
Okay.
Just so, you know, the public can be aware of where we're at. Also, I would like to throw a pitch out there for anybody that has some available time. Uh, the Conservation Commission, um, certainly needs someone to step forward. We've had a lot of longtime people that we are very thankful for, that have served the town well, um, that unfortunately have resigned and are resigning. So if there's anybody that has an interest in, in conservation, please certainly fill out the volunteer application on the website. And that is it for me. I see we had no members reports. Mister Purple, I see you had nothing, but do you have something that may have came up?
No, it's pretty much been budget, budgets, warrant and, um, and unions. So I'm pretty welcome. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, we'll go through the consent agenda. Is there any holds for A? Wow. Andrew. Oh, Andrew broke the record. Okay. Uh, any hold for B?
Yep.
Okay, Chelsea. Uh, C. I'm gonna do a general hold of D through H, just to thank, thank them. So, uh, that leaves I. Any hold? Sam, that's you?
I, yeah.
Okay. So basically, do we have a motion to approve the SOI for MSBA application for Trottier Wolf?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call Mister Dennyton.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski. Mister Stivers.
Hi.
Mister Haley.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio. Hi. Okay. Um, open session minutes. Why don't we start with February seventeenth, Andrew? I think you were the only one, but anyone else can jump in as well.
On line, um, one hundred and twenty-nine, um, where you see the word dollar after million, you don't need dollar because there's a dollar sign. And one, one that's substantive on line two sixty-seven, it's commenting on something I said. It should say, he observed that expenditures in the present budget is a one point four percent increase.
Okay. Was that it, Andrew?
As usual, we're, uh, very, very good.
Okay. And you had nothing on February seventeenth?
No.
Okay. Any others? We'll just go on one more quick time. I see none. Do we have a motion to approve open session minutes, uh, meeting minutes, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, March first, twenty twenty-two?
So move.
Is there a second? Thank you. Roll call. Mister Dennyton.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mister Stivers.
Hi.
Mister Haley.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio. Hi. Great. So Chelsea, you held B.
I did. I just wanna abstain from I, uh, sorry, two.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, any discussion? I see none. Do we have a motion to, uh, appoint the near rebuilding committee appointments, term ending six thirty, twenty-three as presented?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call Mister Dennyton.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski. Thank you. Mister Stivers.
Hi.
Mister Haley.
Hi.
Ms. Brascio. Hi. Thank you. Yes, Andrew, sorry.
So we, there's still two more at-large positions on the committee that we're looking for, right?
Yes. Yeah. Thank you. Good point, Andrew. Um, I held D, E, F, G and H. I just wanted to thank, um, the volunteers that have given their time, quite a bit of time between all of them. And, uh, wish them well, but, uh, we're sorry to see them go, but again, also appreciate all of the time they've dedicated to the town.
So, um, to that end, should we be posting for trying to get new volunteers on the Cultural Arts Council? Cause that's a lot of people coming off at, at one point. I looked at the, again, not as familiar with this particular group, but, um, we appointed someone at the last meeting.
We did.
On the website lists three people. So that's now four. And how, how many vacancies are there then on that?
Uh, there would then be three.
Okay.
I believe three, Andrew. But no, we'll certainly, uh, Mister Purple, if we can get that out on social media. And, you know, we can share that as well, Andrew. Very good point.
Okay.
That being said, do we have a motion to accept consent agenda items, D, E, F, G and H?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mister Dennyton.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski. Hi. Mister Stivers.
Hi.
Mister Haley.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio. Hi. Okay, Sam, that leads you to I, the executive session minutes. Do you have changes that we need to do this in executive?
Yes, probably do.
Okay, fine. We'll, we'll put it on for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you forward your, um, changes over to Mister Purple?
Yes.
And we can get them incorporated as well, Sam.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes, Andrew.
Can we take a brief break before we move on to other matters?
Absolutely. Uh, we'll take a five minutes. Five, we'll say five, Andrew. If we're back sooner, that's great. Five, we'll say five, Andrew. If we're back sooner, that's great.
Thank you for accommodating that request.
I was gonna go there, Andrew, too, so uh, yeah. We're on the same page. All right, we're just waiting for Mr. Purple. Because I think that just ties in. Um, there are, just so the board is aware, a couple of the items. Uh, that are still on the agenda are going to be relatively uh moved relatively quickly. So um. I, one of the things we thought we'd do is to go through the articles, and if we can take positions tonight, if the board's comfortable, we can do that. We can move forward. Um, and. All right, um. So, just pull the warrant up quick. Okay.
Lisa, here, are you gonna just really focus on some of the most um plain vanilla?
I'm gonna flip through them, Andrew, because again, I think I know the ones that that we're not ready to take a position on tonight. So. Um, I think, obviously, number one, to hear reports, I think the board is gonna be supportive of that. So, um, we'll just do a quick roll call vote. Looks like everybody's ready to take a position on that. Andrew?
Hi. Need a motion first?
Hi. Um.
Just gonna slow this whole thing down, sorry.
Hey, do you want to do it the way um um?
Okay, consolidated role thing, role.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Okay, so let's let's go through and then we'll make one motion. How's that?
Good idea.
So one, we seem supportive of accept monies for for from contributors. Put it this way, if anybody has an issue, say I have an issue. Otherwise, I'm just gonna steamroll through these. How's that? Uh, borrowing authorization.
I have an issue.
Okay, so that's.
Well, it's, I think it's, it's just, I think it should say July first, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Mark shaking, he said yes. Okay, with that change. Okay. Um, authorize select board in superintendent of schools, three-year contracts. Okay. Uh, amend the personnel salary administration.
I'd hold that, I'm just not ready on that one.
Nope, that's totally fine. Thank you.
We don't have that yet, do we?
I think there's a a draft, Mark, no?
Well, uh, personal board is meeting in the morning, and hopefully we have everything all set so that. We can put that final draft together. It's pretty much there, you just have not seen it yet.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Chelsea, um, because I'm just going through the contents page. So if I miss something, jump out. Uh, rescind authorized but unissued debt. Okay, collective bargaining agreements.
We don't have.
Got that, yeah, correct. Thank you. Uh, adjustments to fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget.
We don't have.
Don't have that yet. Okay, uh, adjustments to fiscal year twenty-two water budget, I assume. We don't have those yet either.
And that. So, is that for FY twenty-two or is that for FY twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna go through, I'm gonna totally skip the budgets at this point, because I know Chelsea wanted to go through them individually. We can take a vote for that. At the end, um, that takes us to Article eleven fiscal year twenty twenty-three water budget. Is that in there? Is that?
I don't think, so we only have the capital in there?
No, so, so we don't have the, we don't have the budgets loaded in yet. And I simply wanted to make sure, because because it's an enterprise fund, you need to vote the capital and everything for water inside of water. I put that there just to remind me. So the rest of it will be filled in, so I would consider that a budget article, and I would just move fast at this point.
That's fine. Uh, appropriation for OPAB. It's good, okay. Appropriation from free cash sidewalks maintenance. I see nothing. General government capital items, non-borrowing. Okay.
So, so, sorry, on that, so on that one, um. We still have the ADA improvements for fifty thousand and the remediation of Breakneck Hill. For fifty-nine thousand. So the question is, and do we leave it in here? And then offset it with ARPA, or do we take it out of the appropriation and pay for it with ARPA?
Why not the latter?
Yeah, I agree, Sam.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, so my, my, the only reason it's still there and in my copy it's red. Um, along with the fire pickup truck is because the board has not formally taken a vote. On the ARPA money yet. So once you do that, it will disappear.
Okay. Um, general government capital items lease.
So, so sorry, Lisa, we're not gonna vote on fourteen then because we first need to.
Correct, yep, nope, okay, nope. Uh, general government capital items lease. Okay, I see nothing. Newton Street Water Improvements. Okay, Nary School feasibility study. Okay, insurance deductible account.
So, sorry, Lisa, on seventeen.
Yeah.
Um. Do we want to hear anymore about the total dollar figure and where that came from before we take a position on it? Are we good with?
I thought Greg touched on that.
He did.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I know this came up in advisory um a couple of meetings ago, so I just wanted to make sure that nobody else had the same question. I'm good with it, I just.
Anybody else want to hold that one off?
Not me.
Okay. Put that back on. Insurance deductible account. Okay, payment to retirees for accrued leave time. Okay, facilities maintenance fund. Okay, annual authorization of revolving fund amounts.
This includes the adjustment to rec.
Yeah, yes, the five hundred, Sam.
Yeah, I do also want to point out that I have increased golf course maintenance up to seventy-five thousand dollars for this year. Um, the intention is to try, is hopefully, excuse me, the bids will roll correctly. So we could do some paving of the lot and the golf road, as well as also looking at increasing the netting along Lattice Cromer Road. To try to address some of the issues that we've been made aware of over there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Appropriation for CPA funds administrative, that's.
We don't have that yet.
Okay, so we don't have any. Okay, we don't have any of the CP.
You do, well, you do, you have the, you have the ones for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. I just haven't loaded them in yet. Because I need to make sure that the finance team is is comfortable with.
We'll leave those out then. That's fine. Uh, Mooney, where I would prefer we don't take a position until we have CPC come in on that one. Uh, easements for reorientation of St. Mark Street. Okay. Uh, amend town code. Uh, twenty-seven is Mr. Hagerty, who's gonna make changes to that. We'll hold off on that. Uh, noise bylaw, we don't have the final version of that, we'll hold that. Trees, I'm not ready to vote on that at this point. So we'll leave that. Scenic roads, the same. Trails Committee. Um, I have some questions on that. Um, I'd like to get answered, so if we could hold off on that. Uh, adoption of rules and regs, Andrew, that's you.
Yeah, yeah, um, I'm still getting some feedback from some people, or gonna be another version of that.
That's fine, um.
And you're gonna need it by the twenty-ninth, right?
Yes, or, wow.
Twenty-nine's a little late. I mean, you're getting the final warrant to sign on April fifth.
Fifth, right. Okay. As soon as you can. Twenty. Twenty-fourth is our next meeting, but that's that's with advisory.
Okay, I can, I can.
So just so, you know, um, you'll have board feeds, another board's feedback um from the twenty-fifth. On that.
On Andrew's?
So Board, okay, yes, Board of Health is meeting on the twenty-fifth on Andrew's, yeah.
Fine.
Okay, so then let's hear for the twenty-ninth then.
Okay. Capital improvement and capital plan, uh, capital improvement and planning committee. We've a, okay. Uh, I think we're good there. The stabilization fund, I don't know if anybody's ready to take a position on that yet. Nope, okay. Uh, amend prior, so thirty-five is going away. And then the citizens petitions, we haven't had anybody come in, so I'm gonna hold off on those as well. If the board is fine with that. So do we have a motion to? Take positions? I'm I'm assuming, I guess I should ask this question first. On the articles we talked about, I'm assuming there's no dissenting vote. That we agreed to move forward. Okay, fine. Do we have a motion to support Articles one, two, three, four? Si- Sam, are you trying to stop me? Sorry.
Nope, I was coughing.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I could just say out of the corner of my eye, I apologize. Um, six, uh, ten, we're gonna come back to. Twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-six, and thirty-three.
So move.
Uh, third second? Thank you. Uh, roll call, Mr. Dennington.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Healy.
Hi.
And Ms. Brascio, hi. Okay, so we made some good head ground on that. That basically takes care of. That item. Uh, we're gonna go into the twenty-three budget update positions on specific articles. Chelsea, you had asked. For this to be on, and the board had gotten, sorry, gotta catch up on my papers here. Okay, so. I guess the quickest thing would be, we'll just go through um. Based in the warrant, the specific budgets, if anyone wants to hold it for discussion, we'll hold it. Otherwise, we'll assume.
Lisa, just generally, I I I'm, I I I'd want to hold pretty much all all of these. Until we talk to advisory and see if there's any.
Okay.
Disagreement, any, I mean.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so that's my view.
That's fine. Everybody supportive of that? Okay. Then that takes care of that item as well. Uh, town meeting logistics, I have nothing further to add on that. So we pass right over that one. Uh, continued discussion on expenditure of ARPA funds, just a couple of things to add. Um, so the Chair of ARPA, uh, the Board had had approved up to eight hundred dollars of ARPA money for mailer. When they went out and got the costs because of changes uh and logistics of size, it's actually a two thousand dollar request. Uh, for them to send out the mailers to all citizens for the survey. So I don't know where the board stands on that, if the board is receptive to up to two thousand dollars. Um, I know it's a big jump from where we were at. So.
But everything, everything is jumping right now.
It is. Andrew, do you have anything to add? I'll just kind of quickly go around. Chelsea?
Um, I mean. I just. I think it's, I I guess I just don't know what the return's gonna be on it, and I mean, I think we'd be better off. Just making sure people are aware of doing it rather than doing a mailer. Um. So I I would, I, you know, I would be happy with, um, you know. Sitting at the senior center and helping seniors do it. I just think you're gonna miss, you know, people who are. On social media and have technology at their homes are gonna be more savvy to. To find out about it, some other source rather than a mailer, and I think if senior or, you know, the population you're trying to reach to log in to do it. They're gonna, you know, maybe they won't be able to do it on their own. So I guess I I I'm not in favor of spending two thousand dollars to do that.
Okay, Mr. Stivers?
Yeah, I I guess, I think it's worth the effort to be as aggressive, proactive as we can through all channels to alert people. So I think that I agree with Chelsea. I think the return is probably relatively small. On the other hand, I think there's value in uh. Making a strong effort to be as proactive as we can, so I would support the expenditure.
Mr. Healy.
Um, I would spend it.
Okay, and um, I questioned it myself, but I guess it doesn't matter at this point, so. We are good. I don't know that we specifically need to take a vote. We certainly can do that. Um. Do I have a a motion? Oh, Chelsea, you went digitized. You're totally digitizing. Okay, we'll we'll wait for you to come back. How's that?
We have motion to buy a new computer for Chelsea. ARPA money.
I don't know if it's your computer, Sam.
We'll be back in person soon, right?
Well, that is, that is.
Yeah, so I'm not in favor of your motion to use ARPA money to buy Chelsea.
Okay.
We will not entertain a motion for that. Um, I think there's something, Chelsea, are you back? I think under this discussion, Chelsea wanted to bring something up, but also I just wanted to add that. The version of the ARPA list that was in our packet is just a snapshot from three-three. It's been updated since then. Um, I've also asked the upper committee to come into our four or five meeting. Um, just to kind of tell us where they're at, how they're going, how it's it's going. Um. They they were a little bit of frustration on their part, again, you know, about the senior center, but I think we addressed that well tonight. Um, so I'll be having a conversation with um Andrew on that. Chelsea, was there something else you wanted to add under ARPA?
Yeah, do we know how long the survey's gonna be available for? Because it's already live, right? So I'm just, with the timing. Sorry, do we know how long it's it's out for?
I thought they said two weeks. I can't remember.
So we're gonna spend two thousand dollars on something that's gonna be out for another. Twelve days, like this just.
And it's.
It seems like we're doing it on the back. I I I don't think, I I I am not in favor of this at all. I just think it's not a good use of money. Like, we're gonna miss the window here.
So I I will say that there are signs up at the transfer station. Um, I believe they're putting them in the electronic backpacks for the school. Um. Uh, through the senior center, obviously Pam's gonna send out the link. Again, I'm not trying to change anybody's mind, I'm just trying to share some of the ways that. That this is getting out there as well. Um, through, I think myself, bro, already has had it live. They did a thing. And Mark, didn't we um? Tweet this already as well?
I think we did that as well, but we can, we can push that out again, too.
Okay, so I don't know if that changes anybody's thought process, uh, what Chelsea just said.
I mean, we're gonna spend two thousand dollars to send it out when? Next Wednesday, and the survey closes on Friday, like. Am I off here? This just is, this does not make any sense to me. Somebody help me.
Well, again, um, I, you know, don't know the timing. As I heard him talk about it, it seemed like there was gonna be enough time for people to respond. But maybe, you know, if that, if the timing is is as you suggest, Chelsea, maybe you leave the thing open for another week.
Yeah, the website says April fourth. That's about three weeks.
I just think this is a waste of money.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Sorry, I'm just being honest. I I.
Nope.
I don't see the value.
Yeah, so am I.
So, Chelsea, did you, did you want to touch on? Um, yeah, I mean, okay.
So, um. I had a conversation with um Mr. Purple, um. Who subsequently talked to um Mr. Montijo, who I did not have time to talk to today. Um, but there, has anybody heard of the owl?
Yeah, I suggested that to Jason, actually, several months ago.
Okay.
It looks really good in terms of flexibility, yeah.
It does. So it's essentially like a three sixty camera um sound system. um, sound system that can be, that integrates with Zoom and can be used for, um, live meetings to create a hybrid environment. Um, and I know Jay had taken a look, and Mark, keep me honest here, Jay, Jay had taken a look at the townhouse and the space and, um, watching some information about the owl online, and, um, he thinks we may need two at the townhouse. Um, and essentially, it's, I think it's pretty fool, foolproof, and it could record, and it, it seems to have all the features that we would, we've kind of been looking for, I think, um, since kind of the pandemics had started, um, and would be helpful when we go back to live meetings, um, so that we can have, um, public participation in person, remotely, um, and kind of make it, you know, record every meeting recorded, um, and more accessible and transparent for the public. So the reason why I brought it up under ARPA is I, I think that this would be a good use for ARPA if we like it. Um, and if, if this board's willing to use some, some of Jay's IT budget for this year to outfit the townhouse meeting room, um, it probably would be less than five thousand dollars to do that. Um, with the two owls, and then there's some sort of command center board that you could use, um, to, I don't know exactly what it does. Jay's much more versed in this than I am. Um, but it's, it sounds like it, it would accomplish a lot of what we're hearing from. People want us back in live meetings. People want us, wanna be able to see us on YouTube still. People want to be able to participate remotely, in person, kind of the whole gamut, and, and trial it with the townhouse, and then if we like it, then, um, use ARPA to outfit our other public buildings so that everybody is kind of under the same, um, technology, um, availability.
Yep. I think the town of Stowe, I think, is the one that uses that, and I'd suggested to, uh, Jay that he talk with the chip, select board chair there, and I think he did talk with her about it. I think it's either Stowe or Harvard, and you can go there and actually look at how it works for them. There's a, a good demo there that, uh, I thought was pretty impressive. So be worth looking at, I think.
And, and I think it's a great idea, where we've talked about public participation, and, you know, with Zoom potentially ending in July, this gives us an opportunity to, uh, be able to, um, if it works at the townhouse, to be able to put this at the public safety building and potentially the senior center, and then we're still allowing the majority, if not all of the meetings, to be recorded, which I think is, is really what the public is looking for at this point.
Yep, and it's smart technology. It actually finds the speaker out in the audience and focuses on the speaker in one segment of the screen. So it's, it's again, not like being there, but it's, it's much closer than, uh, Zoom, for example, in terms of feeling presence and getting representative, uh, uh, connections with people in the audience and the, and the board as they talk.
My only thought is it is, is, well, we're not talking about, are we talking about spending money on it right now?
Potentially.
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I kinda think about it, you know, any sort of new technology, I, I, you know, is the cost six months from now, a year from now, gonna be significantly less because it's been allowed to just mature a little bit. That, and maybe somebody who understands the industry could give us some information on that, but, but generally, I mean, we're gonna, if we're not doing this in three months, we're gonna be doing, doing it in a year. Um, I mean, it's certainly the wave of the future, so it's just a question of whether or not it, now is the right time from a cost perspective.
I just, I'd buy one now and see how it works.
So that, that's what we're, that's what we're planning, that's what we're planning to do right now, is to, is to purchase, is to purchase, um, you know, because our meeting spaces are large, so if we're gonna make it work in the townhouse, if we're gonna make it work at public safety, if we're gonna make it work at Corterville, we're likely gonna need two of the units, and then obviously the, the command center. We're gonna purchase that out of IT. Um, and, uh, at this point, just, you know, uh, one setup, and, you know, we'll beta test that in the locations, see if it's something that's transferable, see if it can make it work. If it is, we'll come back, you know, to, to the board and see if you're willing to entertain, um, similarly outfitting the rest of our meeting spaces.
Okay.
I, I think it makes it, it it makes sense in the respect that I would like to get back to in-person meetings as soon as we can. You know, I, I, I think there's tremendous value in that, but I think there's also value in the hybrid with people being able to participate, how they feel comfortable, and, you know, being able to, um, view the meetings as well. So Andrew, I don't know what your thoughts are.
Okay, so i- is the decision whether to spend money on something right now? I mean, this concept sounds very interesting. Uh, uh, Mark, you said that you're gonna, it's gonna come out of the IT budget, so there's.
So we're spending, we're sp- yeah, we're spending a little bit of money out of the IT budget now to kind of vet the idea. Um, and, and, and if it's something that we feel we should be rolling out for all our meeting spaces, cause remember, even if Southboro Access Media comes back and, and, and gives us the level of service that we had pre-pandemic, it's still gonna be a limited number of boards and committees based on their abilities and their staffing, and so.
No, I think that this, this sounds like a good idea. It's probably something I need to see to understand, you know?
See, you should definitely go online and Google it, and there's a good video, and there's all, I can also send out a list of the towns that I think are using it, and I watched some of their meetings, and it's pretty impressive. I, I was like, wow, this quality is really good. And, and it balances to the right person. It's incredible.
What if there's a lot of people yelling all at the same time?
It shakes.
It has a laser.
Siren that goes off.
I mean, I, I.
Sometimes happens.
You know, we, we can, I, 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 if the board wants to go look at some of these videos, I'm certainly in support of. I've, I've taken the time to do that already. Um, um, if the board wants to wait until the twenty-fourth, potentially, to take a position on this and, and take a vote, you know, to do this, I'm sold as well. I think it's, it's.
Yeah, I, I, for, it's, 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 it's short money right now, so that's fine. Man, you, you know, I just, we've got this, you know, we've got, I've got this at work. Um, but, you know, we got it through a federal contract, so there, there's a little bit of, uh, you know, yeah, a little bit of price leverage, but it is kind of amazing, um, and it's real, you know, it's pretty seamless the way the, the meetings can take place. Um, uh, you know, you tend to, and a- anyway, i- if you, then you get multiple screens, and it really is, um, it's almost, almost like being there.
So, Mark, do you need a vote from us to move forward with this? It's, it's basically.
This was simply, this was simply informative as to what we're doing, and if it's, if it's something that seems like it's gonna get us where we're looking to go, then we'll be back, and then at that point, we'll need the board to, to take a vote.
Okay, okay.
But Lisa, speaking of meetings in person.
Yes. So I, I think the, the question is, Marty, still, um, from a Board of Health perspective, Chelsea, I don't know if, if.
Next, next Friday, we're discussing.
Okay, there you go. Next Friday, the Board of Health is, is gonna discuss, um, you know, my only fear, Marty, is, is i- if they want distancing and, and some of the topics we have, if we can accommodate everybody, is, is my only concern. I mean, I would go back to in-person tomorrow. I mean.
I, I will tell you, um, maybe there's, maybe there are, there is a small handful of places that are still practicing di- distancing, but not places that I've been going. Uh, and it just seems, you, you know, the, the, the rest of the world is not wearing masks, and, you know, ninety-something percent in, at least where I'm going, and they're not social distancing. So the idea that, that somehow, you know, I mean, if that's wrong, then it's wrong ninety percent, and the idea that we're gonna bucket, and that's gonna make a difference somehow, just seems.
So I think one of the concerns, Marty, too, and I don't mean to interrupt them, I apologize. I think one of the concerns is Sam isn't ready to start recording. So if we meet in person before we have something in place, we're going back to what we did prior with having the laptops and, you know, having to click, make sure you click your speaker off, or that, that's my only concern. I know Mark's been working with, with trying to get in touch with Sam to see, even as an interim before we potentially do the owl, that's why I think it's important that market would be good if, if you guys could get a timeframe on when we could get the owl, get it up, get it going, you know, and, um, we can do a test, but un- unfortunately, there's no way to record right now.
I know, I guess, um, I get, okay.
That's my only concern, Marty, is.
Okay.
Is, you know, um, probably not being able to re-watch or watch our meetings.
Yeah, that's too bad. Okay.
I think we can order the owl on Amazon, actually. So.
Well, hopefully we can move fast, Sam. I, I would be all in favor of that, no question.
It, it's May eleventh, Marty.
All right, next up, Mr. Stivers, this is you. A discussion of bylaw amendment for citizens petition. Sam had sent a request over to me to discuss an idea he has with the board. Sam, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, given the dance we did around the recent citizen petitions, where apparently, according to town council, it's my understanding that our, the customary practice of closing the warrant, uh, which would cut off submission of additional citizen petitions or other petitions, uh, after that point, is not supported by town bylaw language. And so it seems to me that it would be relatively straightforward to craft a two or three sentence bylaw to basically codify what has been practiced previously, to say that the Boris, the select board can open the warrant and close the warrant. After the select board closes the warrant, uh, no additional petitions for, uh, town meeting. The next town meeting will be accepted until such time that the select board might, by its choice, reopen the warrant. And at that point, any pending, uh, petitions that have been filed, uh, will be included in the warrant until the, the select board then votes to close that warrant. And you, then you put a limit at the end of that process to say that the warrant can't be reopened, uh, any closer than, uh, and Mark, I'd look to Mark for this, in something like ten days or something like that, before the date that the warrant needs to be posted, so you don't wind up with an administrative problem in terms of late submissions creating a problem for posting of the warrant. So something that I think is relatively simple there, that, again, basically, in my view, would codify the practice, the historical practice, and I think we could actually draft that with quorum councils help very quickly and get that in this warrant. So that, that was my proposal, and if there's a problem with that, we could do it later, I guess, for a subsequent town meeting. It seems to me it is helpful to have that process managed, uh, and it's, if it's not inconsistent with what we've done previously, sort of, uh, by policy, if you will, um, I, I don't see much downside to it.
All right, let's start with you, Chelsea.
Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I just wouldn't reopen the warrant for this time around.
Well, we don't have to now. According to Jay, it's my understanding, anybody can add artic- articles now, uh, before we get, we get it posted. Is that not correct, Mark?
No, just, just citizen petitions at this point, Sam, so if, yeah, so if there was a, if there was a regular item that you wanted to reopen it for, rec commission wanted to open it, or, you know, some other department, um, the board would have to reopen the warrant.
Okay, so I could do a citizen petition and get this on, in theory.
Until the warrant is posted.
Yeah.
As your attorney, I recommend you don't do that.
I, I'm being overcharged for legal advice here, so. Okay, well, again, I don't necessarily, you know, I feel compelled to do it urgently here, but I think it's a useful thing that, uh, be, again, helpful to administratively simplify the, the warrant process.
I think it makes sense. If we don't do it now, then, that we're gonna have the same problem with the next town meeting, right?
Well, I think one of the problems we had was that town meeting was delayed. Had town meeting not been delayed, then the warrant would have been posted a month ago. Um, and, you know.
Opening, I mean, we, we closed it in January, I think, didn't we?
We did.
There was still a gap there, and, I mean, we could reopen, and there's nothing pending out there now, is there, Mark, that, uh, reopening would create a problem for?
I'm not aware of anything in that, but you never know until you reopen it.
Yeah, well, again, not, not, uh, life or death, certainly, but it just seems to me it's something we could clean up and set ourselves a better position going forward, but I'm not.
Uh, I, I get, I, 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 Sam, I agree with you, but I'd hold, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go through the, the, jump through hoops to do it this time around, just there, there could be more discussion about it. I, I just don't think it's worth it.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't feel strongly about it, but it's an opportunity to clean something up, I think, so.
Yeah, and Sam, I, I, I support the concept. I just worry about opening the warrant back up. I think it, it potentially, again, my opinion, I think it, it not something the board typically does, but, um.
Well, votes aren't there, so let's move on. Thanks.
Lisa, can we go back to the, um, ARPA discussion? Because we didn't take a vote on all the ARPA line items for them, Brian, to move them out of the warrant.
Um, didn't we take a vote at our last?
Okay, no.
Okay. Let's go back then.
So I'm gonna, go ahead.
Okay.
Make the motion. I was just gonna make a motion. Okay.
Perfect.
So I move that we support taking ADA improvements for fifty thousand. Um, conservation remediation, a breakneck hill for fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, the audit for five thousand dollars, and, um, Board of Health for fifty thousand dollars, um, to be used by ARPA funds, um, and taken out of the, uh, warrant.
Second.
The, the audit for five, five thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was in, it was in the, um, the town accountant's audit budget. It was this, it's a single audit. Um, it's a one-time expenditure, and it's to audit ARPA. Mark, right?
Or really, or related. Depending, depending on how you spend the funds, it could be more than one year, but it is gonna be as a result of having to, uh, to expend the ARPA funds.
Oh, so this is tied to doing ARPA. This is to audit how the funds are subsequently spent after, okay.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Uh, roll call, Mr. Dennyton.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Haley?
Um, I'm I, but is this not gonna um, raise the same issue with the ARPA folks as the other thing?
No, they're, they're aware the board has already taken these positions. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and Chelsea, um, I'll just say, Chelsea, you spoke to Andrew as well. That was one of the things we asked after our last meeting, Marty.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Melonowski?
Hi.
Ms. Brashow, I. Okay. That being said, the, uh, proposed amendment to Neri Building Committee, Ms. Melonowski.
Um, so I think when we, when I had suggested we put this on there, we didn't have interviews set up for tonight. Um, obviously, we appointed two residents at large, two out of the four to this committee. Um, I think this committee's nine. Um, so we could continue to advertise this and amend the charge to be seven until they're um, at capacity, and that way they wouldn't have to need five, um, for a quorum. Um, they would need four. I just, I just wanna make sure that we're not slowing them down from getting going, because we're kind of in limbo, waiting for, um, two other candidates to step forward.
Any other nibbles on this one? People expressed interest? Not at this point.
No, not yet, Sam.
So why don't we amend to, to seven for the moment?
Yeah, and we can always amend it back. Uh, everyone in support of that? Marty? Okay, Marty's got that. You've got that look on your face.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I mean, it's, 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 it's too bad. I mean, it's a pretty big deal. You know, what was gonna happen with Neri, it's too bad. There's not more expressions of interest, but I also understand demands on people's time, so.
Yep, also move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Dennyton.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Haley.
Hi.
Ms. Melonowski.
Hi.
And Ms. Brashow, hi. I'll be so glad to not have to do that when we get back in public. Okay, uh, that leads us to public comment. If there's anybody in the attendees that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Thank you all for.
Down.
I was gonna say, thank you all for hanging around. You're a bunch of troopers, no question. All right, I see no hands. Leads us to Mr. Stivers.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Second. Come on, Marty.
Marty wants to keep going.
I'm just trying to keep Chelsea confused, that's all.
All right, Mr. Dennyton.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
Mr. Haley.
Hi.
Ms. Melonowski.